All right. Good evening. The time is now three oh four P M. And welcome to the August twenty seventh, twenty twenty four Operation Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee Meeting. My name is Sheila Adam Stafford. I'm the Chair of the Committee and District Four Board Member. Ms. Adleyan, please call the role.
Mrs. Adam Stafford.
Here.
Dr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Django. Ms. Walker.
Here, present.
Mr. Django.
Present.
We have a call.
Okay, great, great. Okay, with the call in present, the Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee will come to order. So we are delighted to have you join us for tonight's meeting. This is our first meeting for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year, and we're ready to begin working. Before we dive into our discussions, let's take a moment to meet our committee members. We have some returning faces and some new faces. I'll start the introductions and then have the Vice Chair introduce himself. And I'll be followed by other board members, Board of Education staff, and the administration, in the administration. So I already introduced myself. We'll go now to our Vice Chair.
Everyone, I'm Dr. Kenneth Harris, Representative for the Seventh District of the Prince George County School System and Vice Chair of ABFA. I'll turn it over to other committee member and small Mr. Django. Or we can go to our ex-official member, maybe Ms. Walker, Chair Walker.
Absolutely. I'm excited to be here. Thank you so much, and I look forward. I'm the Chair of the Board of Education.
Okay, we'll now move on to members of the administration and then board staff.
Good afternoon, Sharoska Coleman, Chief Operating Officer.
Good afternoon, Jason Washington, Associate Superintendent of Supporting Services.
Hi, my name is Andy Zuckman. I'm Chief Information Officer for the school system.
Good afternoon, Shayla Jackson, Director of Capital Programs.
Lisa Howell, Chief Financial Officer.
Shaun Matlock, Director of the Office of Alternative Infrastructure Planning and Development.
Good afternoon, Ricardo Smith, Fiscal Supervisor for Capital Programs.
Good afternoon, Kibo Baldwin, Director of Transportation and Central Garage.
Hello, everyone. This is Siobhan Smith, Director of Budget and Management Services.
Good afternoon. My name is Mary Outlaw. I'm the Operating Supervisor for the Office of School Safety and Security.
Hi, am I still able to chime in?
I'm sorry, we're we're going through the role at this time. What were you going to say?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was getting set up. I didn't know Kenny called my name, but is there? Am I able to still like, you know, give a little brief hello to the public?
Oh, sure, sure. Go ahead, Jamal.
Hi, my name is Jamal Django. I'm forty first. And I'm just happy to be.
Thank you so much. Okay, we can continue.
I worship the board staff. I am Revelde Fitzpatrick, and I pronounce her he him he is. I'm the Director for the Board of AID. Thank you, everyone, for watching and for staff for joining.
Hi, everyone. Cindy Adlin, Board Staff. I'll be the new support for the ABFA Committee.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, so we will now move forward to item one point three. Thank you for those introductions. The question is to adopt the August twenty seventh, twenty twenty four Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee meeting agenda. Is there any discussion? Okay, Ms. Adleyan, please take a roll call vote.
This is Adam Stafford.
Hi.
Dr. Harris.
Hi.
Mr. Django. Mr. Django.
Hi.
Refrain the affirmative. The motion passes.
Okay, thank you so much. So now the question is the approval of the June twentieth, twenty twenty four Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs meeting minutes as distributed. Is there any discussion? All right, Ms. Adleyan, can you please take a roll call vote?
Mrs. Adam Stafford.
Hi.
Dr. Harris.
Um.
Mr. Django.
Hi.
Refrain the affirmative, zero and a negative. The motion passes.
Okay. All right, thank you. So for registered public comment, speakers can be live, pre-recorded, using a video, audio, or written. We don't have any registered speakers today. So we're going to move into our Chief Operating Officer updates. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sharoska Coleman at this time.
Thank you so much. And again, welcome everyone to back to school, being that it's the second day of school. We're excited about moving forward. So at this time, we wanted to provide an update to the public as well as the board on our transportation action plan. So if we could pull up the presentation, Director Baldwin, myself, and Ms. Outlaw will provide that update. And I guess I should ask, do you need us to pull it up, or are you able to pull it up? Either way, it's fine. Board staff? Okay, very good. Thank you so much. So again, good afternoon, Board of Education Committee Chair Adam Stafford, if we can go to the first slide. Board Chair Walker, Board Vice Chair Harris, a student member of the Board, Mr. Django, parents, guardians, and any students and members of the community who are also attending. As it was stated, my name is Sharoska Coleman. I have the privilege of serving as the Chief Operating Officer for Prince George County Public Schools. If we could go back up to the first slide, that'd be great. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to provide an overview of the school system transportation action plan consisting of five prioritized recommendations. Again, joining me this afternoon to deliver this information is the Director of Transportation and Central Garage, Mr. Kiba Baldwin, and Ms. Mary Outlaw, Coordinating Manager for the Department of Safety and Security Services. So at this time, if we could go to the next slide, please. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Director Baldwin. He's going to speak to our five prioritized recommendations. Actually, I think I have that mixed up a little bit. Hold on for one more. All right, my apologies. I was looking at the wrong place. So as part of Superintendent House's initial ninety day plan, last school year, it was acknowledged that our school system has faced persistent challenges in the area of transportation for students. As a result, he commissioned a transportation audit to identify opportunities for greater efficiency and improvement. The audit was completed by Formative, a student transportation, safety, technology, and management company that is engaged in this work across the country. We will be continuing this partnership with Formative to support our first year implementation of our action plan. Can we go to the, well, actually, let's stay on this slide. So our focus is clear. To provide students with safe and punctual transportation while enhancing customer service for all involved. Our team has carefully formulated five prioritized recommendations that you can see listed, aimed at supporting this goal scheduled to begin this school year. We firmly believe these recommendations will contribute to our improvements in on-time arrivals, transportation, safety, and timely communications, which will together set the stage for an improved transportation experience. As you can see, school start times and end times have been shifted. Again, those are our school bell times. Second, we have consolidated school bus stops, so some of our bus stop locations have moved. And we are also assessing our bus stop location, excuse me, our walk zone safety. So we are auditing bus stops that are located close to schools to determine if a bus is still needed for those locations. First, and don't need a bus, tell us. So this is also referred to as an opt-out for transportation and finally tracking in the app. We've heard that we need improvements with our transportation stop finder application, and this recommendation is focused on improving that functionality and the overall customer service that we're providing to our families. If we go to the next slide. Again, we've discussed that this is a longstanding issue. This is something that we take very seriously, and we are working over the long term to improve our transportation program for all involved. We can go to the next slide. Again, we are working in phase one of a multi-year plan. So it is important to understand that, right? This is phase one, and we will continue to optimize our system as we move throughout this year and subsequent years. So we'll continue to enhance our transportation service by implementing these recommendations, engaging the community deliberately, such as the town halls we hosted directly before the start of school. And then lastly, we'll continue to evaluate our progress using defined data metrics. So this time, I'm going to turn it over to Director Baldwin. He'll review our recommendations in greater detail. And if we go to the next slide.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Recommendation one. As we set the stage, we've shared a progress monitoring slide to represent key actions, communications, and engagements, and reporting measures to all of our stakeholders. Our transportation team has worked through major key actions such as consolidating stops and repairing trips as part of the summer cleaning process that we do every year. We are continuing to receive student information in order to assign appropriate bus stops. As we begin the school year twenty four, twenty five, our team will continue to monitor key performance indicators such as the number of trips per tier. And I'm happy to report as of today, this recommendation number one is on track for full implementation. Let me go to the next slide, please. Recommendation two, our stop consolidation slide. Here, we shared earlier that seventy six percent or sixty five thousand of our students have a bus stop point two four miles or less from their home residence. We have extended the walking distance to an average of point four six miles from the current point two four miles. This adjustment has been placed where appropriate. Keep in mind that our administrative procedure states one point five miles for elementary and two miles for secondary students. Has been focused, has still been given to our elementary students to keep a shorter walking distance. As of today, recommendation two is on track for full implementation. Next slide. Recommendation three talks about our walk zone audit. Our team conducted initial walk zone audits to ensure safe passage opportunities. In our discovery, we noticed we needed some support from important partners to help validate this process further. Our safety and security team will now be part of any further reviews concerning safe passage inside our walk zones. Key actions here included creating the evaluation plan to address every stop for safety, training of our staff, and the use of the evaluation tool as well. We will be conducting monthly meetings with county agencies, including our Crossing Guard Unit, the Department of Public Works and Transportation from the county, as well as our school resource officers. As of today, recommendation three is also on track for full implementation. Next slide. Recommendation four is our codified opt-out process. Our data accountability group provided parent surveys to opt out of transportation before the end of the school year. At that time, we received around three thousand requests to opt out. Parents are still able to opt out through the online registration system within Synergy. All requests dealing with opt-out will be handled by school registers. Parents will be able to see all information in Parent View. Key actions here included integrating the opt-out process into the student information system and optimizing trips from decisions made from the opt-out process. And as of today, recommendation four is on track for full implementation. Next slide, please. Recommendation five, the enhanced customer service. Here, we had two key deliverables for enhanced customer service for our families. One, be able to use the Stop Finder app to see the location of the bus and receive notifications when the bus is picking up or dropping off your child, their child. And second is to receive updated communications through the Stop Finder app and through school messenger if the bus is significantly late in that fifteen minutes or more. We will be monitoring key performance indicators here, such as the number of user accounts, the number of geo alerts created, such. And as of now, recommendation five is on track for full implementation. This point, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Coleman.
Thank you, Director Baldwin. So if we can move to the next slide. This illustrates that this summer, our Transportation Department, in conjunction with the Division of Information Technology, conducted live demonstrations of the Stop Finder app. The purpose was to demonstrate the useful tools of this application once the parents' account, parent accounts were activated. The demonstration included Department of Transportation and Information Technology staff and selected board members. This experience yielded valuable feedback that resulted in the creation of informational videos that are have been released to the public and several program enhancement requests that we've made back to the Stop Finder app vendor. Additionally, we are placing communication staff at each bus lot to ensure timely notification of bus updates. To maximize the benefits of the Stop Finder app, and we've been sharing this as broadly as we can, we need parents to do three things. First is to create a parent view account. We know that we have a new student information system called Synergy, and in that system, there is a parent portal. That parent portal is called Parent View, and so we asked that all families sign up for a parent view account first. Once you sign up for a parent view account, you will receive an email link to a Stop Finder app. That's the second thing we ask that that families do. Activate that Stop Finder link so that you then have access to the app. And then third, and finally, we ask that once you have the app, that you sign up for geo alerts. And those geo alerts, once set up, will allow the bus system to notify you with a push alert to your phone when your bus enters that area. So if you put a geo alert close to your bus stop or close to the school, of which you can do both, then you'll receive an alert when your child is picked up and another alert when your child is dropped off and vice versa in the afternoon when they're picked up and then dropped off back at the home. So in partnership with our with our Communications Department, we've also created videos that show this information, and we're going to show a really brief, two-minute video that outlines that piece. So if it's possible to select the video, and if not, can you stop sharing, and I'll share and show the video really quickly?
Quick question. Is the video in the presentation?
It may not be because it's a PDF, so if you allow me to share, then I can show the video quickly.
There you go.
There it is. No. May I share? Thank you.
This Stop Finder school bus app is going to be a lifesaver.
Wait, what? What's Stop Finder?
The Stop Finder app tells you where your bus stop is and the current location of the bus.
Oh, wow. How do I get the app?
Mom, you have to enroll in PG CPS Parent View. Then you'll receive an invitation to activate the app. Here's the important part. Families must have an up-to-date email address in Parent View in order to activate the subscription.
So now up to the email?
No, Stop Finder. Once the email is verified, families receive a notice to download and activate their account. Use your email and password to enter the app. The student's information automatically populates because you are already in the PG CPS school system. Click on any date at the top of the screen to see the bus pickup and drop off information.
So how can I see the current location of the bus?
That's easy, Mom. Next to the student's name, tap the ellipses menu for the student and select map. Click the map button below or tap on the trip, and the map of the bus route will display. At the bottom of the screen, click on the bell to create geo, which allows the app to send you a notification when the bus enters the zone. You can name the zone and save it.
Wow, I like this app already.
You can also move the zone to position it and change the size of the alert zone with the slider, then save it. At the bottom of the screen, notifications can be set up to tell you when the bus enters or departs the alert zone.
I like notifications.
More information can be displayed by tapping the maps icon. Geo alert notifications will be sent to your device in the app or on your phone at the push notification. Watch the bus move and know exactly where it is.
Wow, this is going to make my life much easier and less stressful.
Yeah, Mom, it's all about modest changes, better service. Everyone benefits.
Visit the PG CPS website to learn more about Parent View and the Stop Finder app.
All right, so thank you so much to our communications team for supporting the development of that video. So with respect to our transportation action plan, it's designed to be implemented over multiple years. Given this is the first year of implementation, we're looking to make progress but not promise perfection. And it's really important. We've tried to level set that expectation with the public. We are looking to make progress as we implement this plan and the efficiency of our overall transportation system, but we know that it will not be perfect at this time. PG CPS is one of the ten largest student transportation systems in the country. It also contains a plethora of student programs, specialty programs that increase the complexity of our system, and so we have a process that we must work through to continue to optimize our program. We are committed to that work, implementing this plan. We are committed to monitoring the key performance indicators to show progress objectively and certainly making the adjustments necessary to support ongoing improvement. This also includes continued hiring as we still have a driver shortage that has to be addressed. So at this point, let me. Yep, so here, as we implement the five recommendations, it's important to monitor our progress with the plan. We'll continue to work with the third-party consulting firm Formative this coming school year. They will provide us with support with ongoing data collection and analysis as we move to implement, implement. They've been positioned to provide us with quarterly reports on the metrics listed here as well as others to support our continuous improvement efforts. This data will be shared with all stakeholders at regular intervals throughout the school year. The Board of Education will receive that first baseline report as well as the public for this coming Thursday's meeting on August twenty ninth. At this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Ms. Outlaw to provide updates regarding safe passage.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Dr. Coleman. First, we want to thank you all. We are really excited about moving forward with the Safe Passage Coordinator positions. The positions have been written. They have been sent to Human Resources, and we are moving forward. We hope to have them posted so that we can interview and hire some phenomenal passage coordinators to help support these endeavors. From a high-level view, knowing that we as a school system and a department and office are all committed to the safety and security of our students as they walk to and from school, also making sure that their stops are safe. We are in conjunction with Director Baldwin, we are working with them for any stop or path or passageway that has been deemed unsafe or questionable. We will have the Safe Passage coordinators go out and also walk the route at the same time of as a student, so they can have a good view of what's going on, and they can come back and make recommendations. We also have an email address that we will share later, and all of those safe passage concerns are actually sent to one location so that we can keep track of them in the ways that we are responsive to everyone. Next slide, please. So this is about the Safe Walk Act, and it is a requirement that we ensure our students are safe when they're walking. So in conjunction with the Highway Department, we met this week, we are going to work with them to determine and identify construction plans so that we will know ahead of time if there's a sidewalk or an area that would be deemed unsafe, then we can work with the Transportation Department in advance instead of trying to catch up later when a situation has already arisen. Next slide, please. And again, requests for bus stop changes will be addressed through the Transportation Department, and if the Transportation Department feels as though we, a modification is needed, we will go out as Safe Passage coordinators and as an office and walk the route to ensure that it is indeed unsafe and make the recommendations in the best interest of our children. Next slide, please. One thing we are looking at is traffic calming devices, and I think we all know about the red light cameras and the speed cameras. They are not my best friend, but beyond that, we talk about, you know, traffic signals, putting traffic lights up, speed humps, speed bumps, all of those things that would help cars slow down, especially during school hours. Sometimes you don't realize that, you know, the bell's schedule has changed. You don't realize it more as soon as out walking. So this is a way with our security teams at our schools and working with principals in particular that if they we receive any information about concerns, traffic, that we'll go out and the Safe Passage coordinators will go out and work and look with the Highway Department and see if that's feasible to install traffic calming devices. Next slide, please. And of course, our Crossing Guard unit, we would be lost without them. They are phenomenal, and they're incredibly responsive. We've been working with Lieutenant Rourke all summer, and so he's there having a hiring blitz. They hope to have more crossing guards staffed by September, middle of September, middle of end of September. So we've been working very closely to identify any streets or crossings that are being raised as concerns by our schools. Next slide. For non-police safety concerns, that would be, again, construction, sidewalk issues or lack of sidewalk. Please, you know, will we will have our folks go out and investigate. And if there is a need for a safety engineer, and the safety engineer is just a little bit more involved, there might have to be structures looked at or something like that. We will, we're committed to bringing a safety engineer in to look at any conditions. And then if there are police-related concerns, we do engage actively with our SRO Division and the other other divisions within PGPD to look at any issues that are deemed questionable, and they do a very thorough vetting process. Next slide, please. Thank you.
Yep, and I think we'll stop there because we've started school. So we're not gonna talk about preparing for the start of school, and we'll field questions at this point.
Okay, thank you so much. So I'll limit my questions to transportation at this time, and then colleagues, feel free to raise your hands if you have questions as well on this topic. I wanted to just first ask, in regards to the parents that opted out, did I hear you mention that we had three thousand parents opt out?
Yes, ma'am, that was at the time of the survey. Of course, now that number, yes, ma'am. At the, at the end of the school year, at the time of the end of the survey, we had three thousand. That number has increased significantly.
Yeah, so can you tell us a little bit about the impact of that on route timeliness and just generally the, the system? How has that impacted it, or how do you foresee it will impact the system?
So right now, we really can't give you an actual impact. On paper, it looks like we were able to reduce, it helps reduce total stops. And that was part of one of the recommendations. We're hoping that we're able to give you a better result later this month or next month to really look at the impact of what that opt-out is. Because we're still getting those responses. And so we want to be able to get a snapshot to share the significant impact it's had.
Thank you. I'd like to request, when you do provide us with that information, that you share with us just, you know, demographically, what groups of people are opting out? Geographically, where are more people opting out? Just so that we can get an understanding of, you know, just the impact of this on those two levels. And then, you know, clearly, like, has this led to the consolidation of stops, routes? Just getting a deeper understanding there. And just...
A board member, before you leave that, that topic, and to Director Baldwin's point, just two things I wanted to add. So at the time of the survey, we had three thousand opt-outs. Now we're at approximately seven thousand six hundred opt-outs. And so we really want to encourage families to continue to take advantage of that option. Because to your point, it does inform the Transportation Department and allows them to optimize routing. Director Baldwin isn't able to give clear numbers today because there are so many moving parts at the beginning of every school year that it takes about four weeks in order for the system to calm down. Meaning enrollments to calm down, for stop consolidation, trip consolidation, route consolidation in some cases, to iron themselves out. And then we can have a truer idea of what the impact will be. So we'll have that information at our larger update at the end of September.
Thank you so much. What, there was, I wanted to ask if you all were aware of some legislation that happened last session regarding the ability for drivers to take the test in Spanish across the state? Is this something, I see you shaking your head, is this something that we are working on? Or do we have some partners that are supporting us with allowing drivers to take tests in other languages? And sort of would they be paired with English-speaking bus attendants? What are your thoughts on that?
Well, one of the things we had to get clarification because the process from NBA is still in the works of how that would test. Because currently, the written test, they can take in Spanish, and it would be with the driving test with our third-party folks. And so that right now would be significant for us with us. And it's just, we're waiting on state guidance on how to make that effective, since that is a state initiative.
Okay, yeah, if there's anything that the board can do to support with facilitating that, that would be really helpful to note. And then I'll do one more question and then I can go to the second round. Really quickly, if you could share, is there going to be like a form where folks can submit a traffic, a traffic calming suggestion? I know that principals are probably at the forefront of this. When I visit schools, they, they can tell me, oh, we need a camera right here. We need a slowdown sign right here. They're very specific. But is it because, I'm wondering, you know, if there is a way to have a central, centrally-located area to capture this information? This could be good information to share with the county council as well.
Sure, thank you for that. Right now, we are utilizing the Transportation Resolution System to capture those recommendations, concerns, challenges related to pedestrian safety. And then on the backend, when we receive it in transportation, it is filtered to Safety and Security Services for them to be able to follow up and then provide the response.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. I'm gonna move on to the next person. Only question is, I know you said you had seventy-six hundred opt-outs. You might have to have one more opting. Because my kindergartner now, she sees everybody on the bus, she wants to ride the bus, so...
Oh, that's wonderful.
Okay, we'll move on now. I believe I saw Vice Chair Harris. Then we'll go to Smah, Jamal Jongo, and then Chair Walker. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair Adam Stafford, and good afternoon, or yeah, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the presentation. My first question has to do with, I know we mentioned that if there are concerns about the walkability, sorry, if there are concerns about the walkability of a path, you all have safety, a safety officer, your office come out and kind of assess the situation. Is there community buy-in to, to that process? Because oftentimes, you know, I'm not saying that you come out one time, but oftentimes in a small kind of swatch of when you do come out and observe the walkability of an area, it might be, it might not be the true evaluation of the ebbs and flows of what happens within that community. So can you talk to us a bit about the process for what is, what's the evaluation of what checks the boxes safe versus not safe?
Sure, thank you for that, Vice Chair Harris. So this process is being built as we speak in a sense that our safe passage coordinators will serve as the primary liaisons to our municipal partners like Department of Public Works and Transportation, who is partnering with us to develop that criteria that we can use to assess objectively whether or not an area is safe as far as safe passage or not. We are also looking at opportunities to potentially partner with contracted services, meaning engineers, who this is what they do as their level of expertise, to assess the safety of a particular area as well as working with the State Highway Administration. And so our team will do a certain amount of the, the assessing. But we're also looking at how we can really be that bridge between the concern that the family has submitted and the resource experts in, whether it be municipal government or private industry, that have that expertise as a part of their regular work, who then will provide that third-party assessment.
Thank you. I asked because these are conversations that we're also having at the county council level with those workgroups that have been established, just around what the process is from the schools, from the school side to evaluate the walkability. And as you know, that ties into the Climate Change Action Plan and all that, all that good stuff.
Yeah, and let me just, let me just say this. Let me just say this, that we also are participating on that pedestrian safety workgroup along with Board Member Boozer Struthers, Ms. Outlaw, Director Cunningham, and myself, as well as DPWNT. So we're all having that same conversation to your point. So that we can develop a, I don't want to say uniform, but a, a defensible and objective process for determining safe passage.
Right, it's a partnership. I just wanted to make sure we brought some of that conversation to you. But thank you for your time. I'll circle around for a second.
Thanks, it's my turn. I just have a very simple question, mainly Chair Adam Stafford kind of brought it up as a joke. But I did have a couple of friends and, you know, students that had DM'd me about re-opting back in. I do, you know, as I'm a senior, so you know, a couple of, you know, people drive. So like, if there was something to happen, like maybe to their car, they're not willing to drive to school anymore. Is the opt-in process back? Is it easy for parents to go back in and say, well, now my students are able to, you know, my student wants to be able to ride the buses, are they still able to? And if so, how often is, I'm pretty sure the transportation, like bus drivers, the transportation route is like using Stop Finder also. So is it, how often is the app being refreshed for their, for the stops to be refreshed so that if somebody does opt back in, are they able to catch the bus that next day? Or like, what's the, you know, way we opting back into the bus group?
Thank you, Board Member Jongo. Very good questions. I'll answer the first half and then I'll direct it to Director Baldwin to answer the second half about the process time. So the answer is yes. A, a parent or family, a student who opts out earlier in the year when circumstances, if they change, as long as they're still eligible for transportation, they can opt back in. We made a joke about it, but it's true that we talked about last year that you might have a senior who's a driver, his grades are great, so he's able to drive. When the report cards come out, his grades go down. He all of a sudden gets put on the bus and has to put the keys away, right? So the family does have the opportunity to opt back into transportation. And I'll have Director Baldwin talk about what that process time looks like. They would do that through ParentView to make that request to opt back in. And then Director Baldwin, I'll let you speak to the other piece.
Yep, just very easily to inform your school registrar that you want to opt back in. It goes through the ParentView process. We will still need roughly three to five days to route, depending on if that stop is in a stop pool force or not, or if my folks actually have to manually kind of route based on where that stop location is. Okay, so as long as you put that request in through this...
I'm sorry, we don't know how to change the music.
You're fine to continue, Director Baldwin.
I'm sorry, I said it again.
So you're fine to continue if you weren't done with your thought.
I was finished.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for recognizing me. I recognize that I am not a voting member on this team, so I appreciate you all going through everything. Can you hear me? Let me plug in my mic. Can you hear me? Okay, I had a couple of things. One is, I was hoping that for the meeting that we're having coming up, as you review this, that we're able to kind of acknowledge what we committed to where we are currently. I'm talking transportation specifically. Where we are and then where we're going by way of any modifications or anything that you've heard in this limited one-week time. I think that would be very helpful to parents to hear, like, hey, here are our top three buckets of what we've heard from you, and this is what we're doing about it. Because I think that's a great tie-in and acknowledgement, if you could consider that. I love that Board Member Adam Stafford, because I had it on my question. Is, is there a form for the public and for board members to be able to enter for the traffic calming? For me, I would love to understand how we can help support getting that message out. One recove is since we're using a Transportation Resolution System, which I hadn't recognized, maybe on a Transportation Resolution webpage, because I've been on there a lot the last couple, the last couple of days, is if we can add, that people can add that type of information in or what we're collecting data from. Because I don't think people yet know that that's the area. And then if there's anything that we can help communicate to our own constituency, that that's what they should use would be great. Because I've been not following the right process. I've been going directly to the council to try to figure out who's the right people to get in touch with to come to the schools. So just any help that you can provide us with a process for safe passage would be super amazing. Just wanted to have you guys consider that. And I know that registration hasn't been talked as of yet, but in general, kind of this is what we committed to, this is where we are, and this is what we're working on as we continue. It's only the first week of school, so I just want to say thank you guys for that as well. That's it.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much for those comments and recommendations, Board Chair. We certainly do intend to provide a set of updates for the board and the public regarding our first week and how it's going, right? Because this was a rescheduled from last week, we wanted to honor the original agenda and provide this updated information as it was originally scheduled. But certainly, we are prepared to acknowledge the, what we feel are the successes and progress as well as the challenges that we're still facing, because there are both, right?
Yeah.
Anything you talk about progress but not perfect, that, that by definition says that some things are going right. Many things are going right, in fact. But we'd also have challenges with respect to, just quickly, routing assignments would be an area. Driver shortage would be an area. Even communication, something that we're continuing to lean in on. We still have work to do in that sphere. So all in all, just kind of as, before we get to the next round, our first day, I do have to say, we did see a marked improvement. We saw a marked improvement in efficiency of our transportation system as well as with communication. But we know that we still have a lot of work to do.
Thank you. And then just that last piece, you showed a chart. Please don't go back to it, but there was a chart in there that you said that we'll be getting updates on quarterly. Think that's phenomenal. Did you say, I think I heard you say that there'll be a baseline of that at the Thursday meeting? Okay, I just didn't, okay, I just want to confirm.
You should receive, the Board Office already has the baseline report as well as a summary slide deck of what's in the, the kind of twenty-five-page data report. And that gives the baseline of essentially, what have we been doing since February, right? That's what we wanted to lay out for the board and the public, that we have these five prioritized recommendations that we've been working on since February. We, at the time the data was pulled, it was the second week of August, beginning of, mid of August. And so we needed to show through a third-party assessment independently, has the bell time change adjustment made a difference? And if so, what's the difference? Has the bus stop consolidation made an adjust, made a change for the positive? If so, what does that look like by the metrics? And so that's what that baseline snapshot is to show, what those gains are, what the challenges are that still remain. And then we're continuing this work, right? When we talk about a multi-year action plan, we have to continue to optimize the system. And so each quarter, we're expecting to improve upon the KPIs, the key performance indicators that are there. And that's what, that we'll be able to compare that baseline to last year and then compare next quarter to the baseline and so on.
Thank you so much. I'd like to move now into the SIS update that's also under this agenda topic because I know that we folks have to leave at four thirty. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, I might have misunderstood that you wanted a full SIS update versus, and I was here to support the transportation component.
Of the, okay.
Probably misunderstood, we...
That's fine, that's fine. I can, I can just do a few questions and then... So that, so I think for generally, I, I just want to see if you can share with us, how has the migration been going to synergy? And maybe just outlining the various work, like synergy versus ParentView. What, how do, how are these things interconnected? And then I think one of the, the two biggest things I'd love, if we could talk about briefly, are what you do if someone has created a duplicate account, I'm guilty of this. So, you know, I would love if you could share what to do here. That's the biggest thing I'm seeing and hearing and getting emails on. And then new entrants that are not, their applications are not being able to be reviewed, which is preventing them from entering school. So those, if we could touch on those things, and then we'll see if there are some other questions.
Sure, thank you for the opportunity. And, and just, I, I know Dr. Strater in the Accountability Division, and I will also provide an update to the full board on Thursday, so we're preparing and bringing in some data. So I would say overall, for a large-scale student information system, in a great implementation, I actually think it's gone very well and relatively smooth. There are, I would say, two pain points in the process. One, which you highlighted, which is this idea of duplicate records. And the other is just making sure that every... One, which you highlighted, which is this idea of duplicate records, and the other is uh just making sure that every. Uh, teacher in our system has the right level of access um in synergy. And that's really just, any access you had um in SchoolMax rolls over to Synergy, but it's not a one-to-one mapping. And so we, we do have some open help desk tickets, we're provisioning access to classroom teachers or if schedules change. And our team is, it's a new process for us on the enterprise side. And so processing those takes a little bit longer than it did with SchoolMax while our team learns the system. But, but overall, um, uh, it's, it's, it's been, I, I've been very pleased with, with the smoothness of the transition. It's a learning curve for everyone in that regard. The registration piece is interesting, um, and I want to come back to that. Because there's a couple of things going on with it. Um, because this is a modern student information system, there's a lot more functionality. On the front end that we had in place with SchoolMax, which was fifteen, sixteen years old. And so we're able to address longstanding data quality issues that we have in our system by moving to a new student information system. Largely by moving away from a paper-based registration process where you invite a, a lot of opportunity for data entry error. Duplicate records created, something that was created in scripts, might be um migrate into SchoolMax. Then somebody enters something in with paper. Uh, the way the process is designed in Synergy, um, you, you can't have duplicate records. And so we could have a scenario, and there's a few different scenarios that have cropped up, where a family who was a student. Uh, who had a student Prince George's three or four years ago, moved out of the district and now is returned. When they register instead of um, instead of saying I'm a returning student, they might say I'm a new student. And that will create a duplicate. That's one example. Um, and when that happens. Uh, for data quality purposes, our central office, um, People the County Data Quality Team. Within about twenty-four hours, um, clears that, frees it up, so the family can proceed with registration. We merge the records. So uh, we are averaging about hmm, one to three, depending on the day. Stop signs, if you will, um, in Synergy, in this duplicate record issue, it amounts to, to about. Uh, about five percent of all pending registrations have this issue. And so uh, in, and, and. Uh, and our central office team is aware of them and we have a, a whole team of people here at Sasser who is just reviewing each one. Merging the records and moving them forward. That being said, that the registration, independent of the technology, is a complicated and complex process. And many of the registration holdups from time to time or things that you might hear about. Are really not necessarily related to a duplicate record issue or a technology or, or a um, a stop sign issue. There's um, you know, I, there, there's, there's missing documents or missing paperwork or. Um, there are shared housing agreements that need to be looked at and analyzed. Um, there's students coming, let's say, from a homeschool environment with very little records from the previous year. In terms of the, their schooling that the homeschool office needs to look at in coordination with. Potentially the international office or the special education office. And if, if, and we see a, a, a lot of, a lot of people coming for the first time on last Thursday or Friday or even yesterday. And so when that happens, it does take a little time to resolve those issues and that's, that's not. Necessarily related to any technology implementation per se, that's, that's process issue. And I will say, just as we're looking at the processes, I think there's going to be opportunities for reshaping. Many of these registration processes now that we have a new system in place. Um, but we'll have to debrief that after we get through just the opening of school and the, the, the thousands of, of, of new registrations. That come in um every day. So just closing it out, getting back specifically to the duplicate record issue. Um, we're clearing them out very fast every day. It's just, just for example, yesterday we had a hundred and ninety-six new registrations. Uh, that created a duplicate record. Um, and so those should all be cleared out by today and those families can proceed with registering. Um, but that is a data quality issue on the front end. And that was a dis- design decision, decision that we made as a school district going into this new system. To make sure that we don't have backend data quality issues that lead to audits, audit findings, funding issues. For example, if we find duplicate students and there's an audit. From a couple of years ago, we have to pay the state back for that or, so, so there's a lot of reasons on the front end. Um, but that is a, that is a, a change and it is impacting, like I said, about um, you know, about anywhere between one to three students per school. I'll just close by saying yesterday I had, I had an elementary school principal email me and say. I, I really need help from central office, you know, we've got all of these parents who are really upset um that they can't register their students today and. And, you know, and I was on the phone and I looked in the system and, and there were, there were two stop signs, two duplicate records out of the thirteen. The other nine were a back and forth between the school and the parent for appropriate documentation. So there's definitely um, and, and, and one of those two stop signs had been initiated that day uh that we were going to clear out. So um, I, I so appreciate the frustration. We're, we're moving really, really fast to uh clear any duplicate records. But I think that that's a very small percentage of the issues. And the larger issues really speak to the complexity of student registration, the frustration when we're missing documents. Where we have to connect one office to another office to review something. And I do think there's a lot of opportunities for us to get better. Um, in future years in that realm of, of the underlying processes. So that's a, that's an overall thing. I'll give you just some other statistics. Um, we are up to uh about forty-six thousand ParentView accounts. Um, to put it in context, we ended uh our max with SchoolMax was about fifty-eight thousand. So we're, we're getting close to that. On ParentView, because I know board members will want to support this effort. Um, what, we're going to make an all-out blitz through our schools. We know that our schools are the, are the best places to enroll and, and. Um, I just, we just want to wait a couple more weeks to let the registration, the, the year and the annual registration. Uh, processes run its course and then work with our schools to really focus on getting existing families into ParentView. Because that's going to require an all hands on deck on the part of our schools. Um, and we want to do it for a lot of reasons. There's the Stop Finder issue that you heard about, there's School Messenger, there's District Communications, there's data quality. Um, it's just, there's only so much, I, I think right now that our school teams can metabolize um with all that they have going on. So they are processing and, and registering, registering people in ParentView. Uh, but we're going to need our schools to help. And the reason for that um is because, and this gets to your question, Ms. Adam Stafford, about ParentView. If parent, I'd love for everyone to register online in ParentView, but there is a data validation process. If Ms. Walker has a student in the school system. Uh, we need to make sure that it's Ms. Walker who is trying to establish a ParentView account. And so there's going to be a series of questions. One, first and last name. Two, phone number, three, email address, and four, um, student name. We don't ask for the student ID because that sometimes can have a data entry issue. So if, if you're off on any of those four items, or if we, if you change your phone number. If you change your email address, if we don't have an email address for you, then we're not going to be able to validate who Ms. Walker is against her student. And for data privacy, confidentiality, and obviously all of data security, in that situation, Ms. Walker is going to have to go to her school. And to create a ParentView account. Going to school today, when a school is also um addressing new registrations for the first time, we just think that's a little too much for our schools. So um, we're going to get there, um, and I'm really confident that we can do it. Uh, but we, I think we just need to sequence this and stage this for when our schools are ready to take that next step. Um, so that's where we are. Um, overall, I mean, I'll, I'll be honest. Um, my, my, I've been nervous uh for all summer. I wanted, we, I, I was here in twenty-two thousand nine. When we had thousands of students in the auditoriums and I was really, really worried and I, and I kept saying, first do no harm. Let's move the system from the old to the new um, without breaking anything. Um, and then we can now leverage this new system like our neighboring districts who are using it to get to the next level. And I think that's phase two. So I think we're, we're moving through phase one. Uh, understanding the frustration with the duplicate records which we're processing. Um, and uh, and I'm, I'm excited for us to, to continue to get into the system. So that's where we are.
Thank you so much, Mr. Zach, uh, Dr. Sherman. I really appreciate you um answering those questions here and recognizing that you do have to leave. Um, I just had a couple of quick follow-ups, um, and then I asked my colleagues to limit their questions because um. We also need to get to the CIP. Um, was there usability testing done on the system prior to the launch? Um, if, if not, um, I would venture to say if, if there could be some done, like for example. Maybe there needs to be a very small chart on the page for ParentView that says. You're a new student if never been in, never filled out a form on Scribd. Is that, is that how you say it? Because as a kindergartner. I thought I was a new parent, but I actually was not. I had filled out an application. I think that most, I think if we look at the data, most of the people that. Are making these duplicate accounts are people that filled out an application and are thinking that they're new, but they actually are existing parents. So maybe some type of just like.
Yeah, oh yeah, hundred percent.
You know, and that, that could.
That's, once we saw that happening, we updated that language uh completely. And I think that also. Yes, you, you're right. And I would say I think it speaks to some process issues about when you register in May. How you were then informed in the long run, whether or not your registration's been accepted. Um, and, and all of that. So yes, the answer is uh, yeah.
Okay, um, and then uh, is there a dedicated support team for ParentView? Um, and I know that we created these parent support centers last year. Perhaps they could be dispatched to these parent support centers as they. Get up and running or even to our, some of our community schools to just be on site like as a ParentView advocate. Speaking different languages to support parents with the enrollment.
Yeah, so from an enrollment perspective, we have central office teams that are out daily supporting schools where we have enrollment surges or, or. Or challenges and, and that's something that we've been doing for several years, um, just as a school district. On the ParentView side, um, our historical model for SchoolMax and now for ParentView. Has been to identify um, the, the family portal and our ParentView administrators at each school. Recognizing that the school is, is, is our real locus of control. Um, and that is, that is a resource function for us, just in terms of, we have a help desk of, of nine people. That is, sorry, um, that's focused on uh, on our workforce. And so we've always historically decentralized that approach and that's why. Uh, and I'm not saying that's something we have to do in the future. We certainly have to look at the resources around it. Uh, but that's why when we make the all-out blitz for ParentView and begin that, we want to make sure our schools have everything you just said, set up. Uh, parent engagement, assistance, community school coordinators are properly trained and able to uh work with everybody to enable ParentView accounts. So um, right now the focus is on registration um and getting the school up and running. But once we get through this initial bump and then we get into the next phase, the answer is yes, we're going to focus that energy at the school level. Uh, we don't have a dedicated central office phone line for parents to call. Um, because again, we have a decentralized model of working through the schools.
Yeah, it may be something to consider. I know board members have been, you know, trying to problem solve and. I'm not sure, but e- even if it's just uh an email account, I, I feel like it, it could possibly even help. In data collection in terms of what are the most common issues or even a form. Uh, I'm going to go to um, uh, Vice Chair Harris and then I'm asking if we can move forward. Because we do have a, a long CIP presentation as well.
Thanks, Chair Adam Stafford. I'll make it quick. Um, so Dr. Zuckman, you know, I've, I've joked to you before that I was one of those students in the auditorium. In two thousand eight, two thousand nine, last time this happened. And so I appreciate our conversations and the intentionality behind making sure that everything went well. This time around. Um, uh, to speak to Chair Adam Stafford's point a little bit, I do think that's something like a um, a decision tree. Would be helpful, just to help our parents and uh families navigate specifically where they fall in this bucket of, of. Sometimes confusing or not as straightforward um questioning. Um, my question's pretty simple. In terms of percentages for signups, uh, did you already say what you were at for? Uh, by, for the, the parents at this point or families?
For ParentView, we're up to forty-six thousand.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And then um. Uh, just to step back again, and one of the pain points, again, really we're using this system is just not knowing the confusion around. If you're doing something right, you're entering something in the right fashion. So I do think again, we can, we can have some conversation around what a decision tree will look like, how we can provide additional supports. Whether that's, you know, a simple chatbot or whether that's leveraging some other technology that we have, but I think we can expand on that. Uh, so I wanted to know the percentage because I'll circle back around to you for something else, but I appreciate that, that information. That's my time, Chair.
Yeah, thank you. I, I'm just saying to you, I know we're just on time to, to both of you. Um, I, I really mean that I, I think we're gonna, we're gonna have a, a central office team of, of multiple departments. That looks at the overall registration process, start to finish, to get to the decision tree that you're talking to. Because there's, there's just so many different departments involved. Um, and I know Dr. Schrader is going to resurrect uh some task force document for twenty-twenty-one that speaks to this. But some of those issues, many of those issues we had several years ago are still present in the process. Um, and I think this actually is a really unique opportunity to get it right, because we have a new technology. So we have, we have an opportunity to shine a bright spotlight on our processes and bring people together. So I completely agree with what you're saying, both of you.
Thank you, thank you so much. And we're sorry for your loss. I know you have to get, get going. Thank you for being here today. All right, we're going to move forward here. Um, I would like to move now into. Um, the phase two update, um, in, in thinking about our P-three schools. I'm going to recognize um, Mr. Sean Matlock for the report on the phase two project. And then after that, we'll be moving into uh item three point three, which is our capital improvement plan. Um, in the presentation on the FY twenty-six through thirty-one.
Thank you, uh, um, Committee Chair, uh, Adam Stafford. Um, I'll be very quick. Uh, we are, are proceeding with the eight schools that we're going to build. Under phase two. Uh, we had, as you know, uh, closed commercially. Uh, at around the end of August, uh, or the beginning of August. Um, on the commercial phase of the, of the project, but when we had to close financially. And as you know, we had come to the board and asked for an increase in the affordability limit to seventy million dollars. Um, and with the way the uh project was working out, it, it looked as if the county would pay um, any escalation. Plus uh the entire portion of the county's portion of the availability payment. With the cap, which we estimated at that time was somewhere around forty-seven million dollars. And the uh state would pay twenty-seven million dollars on a straight scale. Uh, as a portion of the availability payment through the MSA. Uh, and as we also noted, uh, the, the, the state had given us more time to close. So that we might get more favorable financial terms. As it turned out happily, I must report that we did get in fact better financial terms. And uh, as a result, um, uh, we were able, so um, we, there was a bond sale. Um, to the public, um, uh, and during that portion, there was a, a, a road show, a short road show. And then um, there was a subscription. I actually happened to be allowed to watch the subscription as they came, as they came in. And we were only looking for just under seven hundred million dollars in bond subscriptions. And we got three point four billion dollars in bond subscriptions. That enabled the finance team to go back and negotiate lower interest rates on the bonds. And therefore we were able to bring in the um, the AP at under the original affordability rate. At sixty-three point four million dollars annually, we're able to bring the county's contribution down to forty-two million dollars. Annually, and, and we were able to eliminate almost all the escalation. So that in year one, it'll be forty-two million dollars. In year um, thirty, it'll be forty-two point three million. So only three hundred thousand dollars of escalation over thirty years. So it was an incredibly good response. The market responded very well to the project. We had a lot of very thoughtful questions from the bond purchasers during the road show. Uh, both Jason Washington and I participated in uh, on those shows, giving him information about the, the transactions. They seem to be, they take our information very favorably, um, as uh, exhibited by the interest in the project. So uh, now that we've financially closed, uh, we shall be starting, uh, we'll have our groundbreaking starting September tenth and eleventh. Um, for the first three schools, that being Margaret Brent, Robert Frost, and Templeton. Uh, and um, we've asked them to accelerate a little bit of work at Templeton, so they're gonna try and get out and secure the site um, with, by next week. Um, we should see work begin on all the sites, on the first three sites, as well as the uh, work on Woodmore start um, uh, this year. Um, we hope to have construction uh, at least the demolition and the construction portions underway um, by mid September.
Thank you so much, and that is really exciting to hear about the lower county contribution. Um, thank you so much for your work there. What factors do you think contributed to the bond sale specifically around our project? And I guess, you know, still trying to get a deal, can we take advantage of the cut in interest rates that is forthcoming on top of this? So.
Well, I think a little bit of that was baked in. I think uh, as you may, uh, the time before the sale, the market, um, the stock market had gone down a bit, which made uh, the bond market more um, uh, attractive. And we also had had the information come back in about, um, you know, the job rates starting to fall. So I think that kind of got baked into the price, um, as people were looking to put more money into the bond market. And, and that's why uh, we were able to get as much interest. There was a lot of interest involved. And then once we started, uh, once, uh, once we got the pricing in and once we got all the orders in, uh, they really went out and hammered the bank, uh, Wells Fargo is the bank that handled the bond sale. They went out and really hammered the market and really brought the price down significantly on the interest rates. The, 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 the spread that they closed was significant, in some cases, ten basis points. So it was very, very significant. Um, the, it was, they did a phenomenal job in getting, in getting the deal. And the close happened very quickly. Uh, we, um, and we closed like, I think within forty eight hours after the bond, uh, orders replaced.
Thank you so much. And I, I may have some follow up questions on how that can impact accelerating some other projects over time. This, that is something that I'd like to talk more about. Um, if there are no other um, comments on this particular topic, I'd like to move forward. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, so we're gonna move on now to item three point three. So this is the capital improvement plan work session for the F Y twenty twenty six, twenty thirty one. Discussion of recommendations to the board regarding the C I P. Now gonna recognize Mr. Jason Washington for the capital improvement plan and comprehensive maintenance plan work session. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you so much for joining uh, us. Uh, well, thank you for the invitation for us to be here. Uh, what we wanted to do was really to give uh, Chair, I mean, uh, Director Jackson the opportunity uh, to frame out um, the fiscal twenty six C I P. Um, we wanted to do this before first reader and before the public comment, um, just so that uh, we can uh, give you an idea of how we've went about and how the capital programs team went about developing the C I P. Um, to, to address some, some initial questions and to take some stuff back for us to consider as we move forward. Um, and so I really uh, applaud uh, the capital programs team for this presentation. And uh, want to, to turn it over to Director uh, Shayla Jackson to uh, provide uh, this presentation, and then we will open it up for some questions.
Hey, sounds great. Thank you guys so much. I've been really excited to give this presentation. Um, I'm gonna try to keep an eye on the clock here. Um, it's gonna be a little hard, because this is a bit of my passion project, but um, the, the presentation roadmap in short is just, I really wanna make sure we have a shared understanding of the past, you know, where we started and the present, where we are. Because without a shared understanding of those kind of foundational principles, I don't think we can have a reasonable discourse on what, what makes sense to go forward. Um, so that's what it'll be. It'll be where we started. It'll be the progress report of where we are now. And then we'll get into the capital budget. Next slide, please. So I, I apologize. That literally means we're, we're gonna take a history lesson, but I promise, like, I will be a quick pilot through it. Um, next slide. It's Seth, Brief History of PG C P S Facilities. So in nineteen sixties, we had a national expansion. We had one here. It's basically the baby boomers. Um, in nineteen seventy, though, you have expansion accelerating again due population growth. But you also have a like documented mandate um, for Prince George's County Public Schools to avoid desegregation. Like, it's something that was actually studied by the Civil Rights Commission. Um, it's an expansive document. It outlines what was done to avoid desegregating. Uh, in short, it really was building a lot of capacity in the South. And I think, as you might imagine, when they built to desec, to avoid desegregation, they didn't build high quality um, facilities there. And in nineteen eighties, you know, investment kind of halted for a minute. Uh, nineteen nineties, you see an uptake again. There were some additions. There's some new schools, not many, but there's some science labs. In two thousand, there's an initiative to build twenty six schools. It doesn't quite happen. They do nine schools and eighteen additions. Uh, in a second, I'll show you a little bit more about what that looked like. Because in two thousand eight, there is the Great Recession. So capital funding and maintenance became severely restricted again. And so there's staffing cutbacks and there's a slowdown again. And that's pretty much where we are in twenty fourteen, when the new master plan study commences, that is guiding our current activities. Um, next slide. Which is another look at basically the same historic consideration, but what I want to draw your eyes to is this William Schmidt era. Because this is where a lot of that inequitable building occurred. And I mean, as you can see, under that, they built almost ten million square feet. We currently only have fourteen million square feet. So that was a prolific building time, um, with some serious concerns about purposeful inequity. Um, and then even as you're looking at that next line, that is showing another twenty one schools, but another twenty three additions. Like, they're still following that same policy that was set in place. So that is just such a big um, square footage number from our inventory. And it's just a reality we're still trying to address, because also apart from whether or not the schools were built too big, and whether they were built substandard in those eras. That's also a long time ago now, right? So those are just intrinsically fifty years old, even if they were built well. And as you go down this list, you can see we've never built that much. And until the current day, and I know twenty fourteen and beyond is missing from this list, but that is the history. Um, next slide. So as we enter in twenty fourteen, we, we know we're in a state of disrepair. You can see the facilities crumbling, but it's unquantified repair, right? We don't know what we need to fix it, like what projects. We don't know what order we should do the projects, and we don't know their overall cross, their overall costs. So yes, they're crumbling. Yes, we see the work orders. We're, we're basically doing Band-Aid repairs from a capital side. Um, we're basically sharing that split with maintenance, because as I told you before, you know, maintenance was severely restricted. Um, funding rise um, during that Great Depression period. And then you see the next step here after defining the need. This is where we'd launch the master plan study. In twenty fifteen, we start to focus on these master ed specs. Because there's a failure of facilities to provide adequate education that goes beyond condition. So you could have unsafe parking lot, unsafe entrance. You could have admin buildings in the back. You could have unsafe sightlines in the hallways. You could have tiny, tiny classrooms, no support spaces, no specialty learning. And you could actually be in a good facility condition, but those are still points of failure for the delivery of superior education. And that is the main assignment of ed specs. So put a pin in that, we're coming back to ed specs, but I also want to make a side note. That without a prototyping master ed spec, you also would note that some of our previous buildings were done with some built in inequity, right? Because if you don't define as a system what is a baseline constitution for a school, and you leave it up to each um, team or iteration or whatever is going on at the time to build in these different regions, you start to see some wild vacillations in what is considered an adequate school. So that was a major process that happened in twenty fifteen. We sat down with academics. We sat down with the school system holistically, and we started to determine what a school looks like to determine the outcomes instruction is looking for. So then the school assessment started, where you scored against the ed specs for the educational adequacy performance. You scored against facility condition, you scored against utilization. And that would come out with a data-driven prioritization for a master plan. It would be divided into three cycles. It would come with a quantification of the need, which is clearly helpful. Like, I have an engineering background, so I don't know how to solve problems if I don't know what the problem is definitively. It's very hard to um, identify an accurate solution. So this was the purpose of all this. And eventually then we ended up in twenty seventeen with the current master plan that we have been marching down for quite a while. My next slide, I just want to spend a little bit of time on those three pillars of that master plan. The facility condition, educational adequacy, um, and capacity considerations. So for facility condition, um, it's, it's actually considered a facility condition index. And all that really is, is what is the cost of the needed repairs over the cost of the building? So like, in your house, if your sink is leaking and you need to repair it, hopefully that is quite a small percentage of the cost to replace your whole house. So that means you would have a low F C I. That indicates you just do the repair. But what if the repairs you need were structural, windows, roofs, all of your HVAC and electrical systems needed to upgrade, and the price of that was three hundred thousand dollars? Now, I, I don't know the cost of all of your homes, but for me, uh, that would put me at a pretty high F C I. And at that point, that's where what's responsible is to determine, do we do those patchwork repairs? Or do we renovate? Or do we replace altogether? So that is part of um, how we got to our recommendations. But as you want you to see, this is where the F C I's kind of came by district. Um, and, and although you can see trends of difference, I just also want to make sure you understand that these are all considered very poor. Like, none of this is a success story, right? And so we had known coming in that we had the second oldest inventory in the state by age. But we didn't know that they were the third worst in the state by condition index. Um, next slide. Educational adequacy. So we talked about how you could be substandard. You could have unsafe parking lots, unsafe entrances, tiny, tiny classrooms, and that would generate a low educational adequacy score. Because once we had those ed specs, we created score sheets and they walked the facilities. You know, and they scored all these things that, you, you know, you see some of them here. And that would drive the prioritization order. Um, but it also helps to make a responsible master plan, because what do you do with a low educational adequacy score? Like, if you do have tiny classrooms and a bad site configurate, configuration that's not safe, you're probably not just gonna put an addition on it to address capacity. It probably needs to be replaced. Because some of those core concerns aren't adequately addressed by a renovation. Whereas if your facility condition was bad, but you had a decent educational adequacy score, that might be now you're indicating, oh, we could renovate that space. If there's a capacity issue, we can make an addition, and that would be a responsible choice. So just some notes, you know, we had schools like Buck Lodge and Nicholas Forum. They had some of the lowest E A scores. I bought that. Um, the central region had moderate scores. There's always some outliers. Um, in the southern region, we had quite a bit of variation. Um, next slide. Here, I just want to pause for a second to talk about the costs of under enrollment. Um, so the findings was that the average utilization in the southern region was seventy four percent. Um, there were some schools at the time that were projected to drop as low as twenty two percent. And just the best practices around facility planning establishes a sweet spot as eighty five to ninety five percent. There you get a full range of programs. You can take um, advantages of the spaces in your buildings. You take advantage of those programs. And that's usually considered around a sweet spot. The other piece I want to acknowledge is that it does impact the offerings the school is able to provide outside of what it has the facility's space for, is just a part of school-based budgeting, um, the number of students. The other part is available funding is like drastically reduced when you're underutilized. And it's not just like that specific facility. So for example, we're trying to do a stage renovation at Longfields, but when you fill out those forms for state funding, you have to identify the number of empty seats at, I think, for Longfields, it's New North Forestville. It's District Heights, it's Arrowhead, it's Sam Massey. And once they see the total amount of available suites in the region, the state will either decline to participate totally, depending on that number. If it's a reasonable number and it doesn't indicate, like, you just need to build a new school today, they'll just reduce it to the amount of capacity they believe. So if you're doing a thirty million dollar renovation, now maybe their contribution drops down to one million dollars. That, that's not exactly helpful when our normal participation from them is around sixty percent of their construction cost. Next slide. Over enrollment. So over enrollment, of course, was higher in this north. Um, there was an average over a hundred and twelve percent. Uh, there were some schools that were projected to reach over two hundred percent without some immediate intervention. And I think this one is more intrinsically understood. I don't think anyone drives by a school with like a whole portable farm and thinks, wow, they're knocking it out of the park there. But what's less understood, I think, is that over enrollment then drives down all of these other factors we're talking about, right? So with educational adequacy, when you're overburdened and you're at a hundred and twenty percent capacity, even if your parking lot configuration is technically safe, now it's challenged, right? It becomes unsafe. It becomes harder to divide pedestrian and vehicular traffic and bus traffic. Your supporting spaces, your specialty programs are usually commandeered to have uh, regular classrooms. Cafeterias that are, are now built too small for your actual population. You have, sometimes we are feeding lunch at breakfast times and up until the final bell. You have extracurriculars limited because our athletic offerings don't support those higher utilization rates. So it drives down your E A score too. Your F C I score when you're over enrolled, like you're overburdening, let's see, the HVAC system. It's not designed to work at higher capacities. You're overboarding everything from the equipment to the facility, so your F C I score is dropping. And so because of that, and because those are the pillars that you'll find really internationally for a responsible master plan, you will see that any reasonable data-driven master plan will prioritize addressing overutilization. So I'm asking you to put a pin in that. We'll, we'll be coming back to that. I just want to show you sort of where that plan um, landed. Next slide, please. So the plan, once they looked through all these factors, they identified that we needed eight point five billion dollars in twenty fourteen dollars. They felt like we had two billion at the time in deferred maintenance. And that eight point five billion was to modernize over twenty years. It was actually five point five billion, but that's what they assumed escalation would be over twenty years. Uh, that was in twenty fourteen, so I think most of us know escalation increased quite a bit. Uh, that broke down to four hundred and twenty five million dollars a year to really implement these three cycles of modernization. Our, our average funding, however, has been just a hundred and eighty million dollars a year. It also prioritized a hundred and forty projects it identified into three cycles. So all of the, end of the three cycles would le- lead to a modernized portfolio in twenty years. It was seventy seven full renovations and replacements. It was thirty nine limited renovations. A handful of system-only replacements, eight new schools, and maybe five like miscellaneous projects, maybe in addition, if what was uh, a concern was a capacity resolution. It also identified twenty nine closures, and that was gonna bring an estimated savings of six hundred and sixteen million dollars. So again, the three cycles, the first cycle's goal was to resolve over enrollment, um, because of the factors we talked about. The second cycle was to resolve the facility condition as its primary focus and consolidation needs, which of course then, you know, brings more southern and central schools. And the cycle three was just to find those final projects, um, and modernize them as well. Uh, next slide. Oh, yeah. So this was the plan cycle one spending per region. This is exactly as approved in F Y seventeen without uh, any changes. So this isn't what we actually spent. Just want to note too that it also didn't consider any consolidation-based projects, because remember it was twenty nine closures. And the plan then with those twenty nine closures was every time you closed a school, those were most And the plan then with those twenty-nine closures was every time you closed a school, those were mostly in the south and the central areas, if not all. You were always gonna move those students into a brand-new facility. So you might be building less schools, but the idea was you were getting students into modernized facilities, which of course is our overarching goal. You can see that the plan was always a pretty hefty investment in the north for cycle one to prioritize overutilization. And the numbers for central and south were quite a bit lower, in fact. That southern number is just Sutland High School, don't look too closely at that because Sutland High School's no longer two hundred and fifty million dollars. And it also would exclude regional programs, so William Schmidt is technically in the south. But we were only, this was only made to report on what K-12 improvements we were gonna make. Next slide, please. This was cycle one then, you can see it was supposed to be over in FY twenty-two. It required that four hundred and twenty-five million dollars a year, I just wanna note that again is twenty fourteen dollars. And now that that number, just with basic inflation, is five hundred and seventy million dollars a year. It was thirty-seven projects and it was twenty-nine closures. I will note, some of the closures weren't represented here, because the thought was always you build the new school first and then you consolidate into it. Most of those closures were noted in our original approved master plan as TBD. The thought was the consolidation study would continue and those schools that were TBD would then be slated between cycle one and cycle two and maybe some in cycle three. It's not exactly what happened, but I'll talk about that, I think, on the next slide. So I personally love that transition slide right there, you can see cycle one then versus cycle one now, so we'll probably come back to that. But I wanna first point out that in green, you see all the projects that have been delivered. In blue, you see the projects that are in progress, and I don't mean like in progress, like we're dreaming of it, I mean in progress, like it has funding, it's in design, it's moving towards an actual delivery. But some of the reality highlights are, average funding has been a hundred and eighty million dollars a year, which is quite a bit short of five seventy or four twenty-five. But we have delivered seventeen projects and there's sixteen more coming within the next fifteen, not fifteen, within the next five years. And it represents an amazing amount of support, because this is clearly the most prolific building undertaking since that chart I showed you in the nineteen seventies, right? This was done with the innovation of P-three, it was done with a lot of traditional funding. All of which happened with a lot of united support and consistency from our stakeholders and politicians. I also wanna make you aware that you can see there are some cancellations. Some of those represent like planning wins, where we were able to maximize these limited capital funds while still getting the kids in modernized seats, like Colin Powell Academy, taking Isaac Gordon and Potomac Lanning. Some of them are tougher choices, like canceling International High School, even though Annapolis Road Academy is a cycle-two school. That came out of a lot of political conversations where it just was a lot of money to spend for four hundred students. And especially with the major investments happening for the New Northern Area High School and High Point High School. Think we can go, well, no wait, I wanna make one more point. Some of the ads you'd also see is Fairwood up there. You know, if a school got condemned like Woodmore, it's responsible to add to your cycles. And I just think it's a mistake to do either, like it would be a mistake to put your head in the sand like an ostrich and ignore ignore the reality that's happening around you and just kind of doggedly pursue a plan that was developed at fifty thousand square feet and ignore sort of that boots on the ground. How do we keep the kids? And especially as we're extending beyond FY twenty-two and a lot of failure is increasing. You also see ads like Central High School and District Heights and James Madison, most of those in the central and southern region. And that's just due to that fifty thousand square feet view that the master plan was created on. It also was created to finish by FY twenty-two. And sometimes, you know, it's really hard to actually predict failure. So I think these represent times where we were flexible enough to know when to accelerate. But also we've been able to not whimsically approach or deviate from a consistent delivery and prioritization. Yeah, I think we can go to the next. So this is the actual spend, so if you remember that first slide I showed you from the plan itself. That two hundred and fifty million dollars in the south, that was just Sutland High School. So just again, ignoring Sutland High School's actual costs for a minute. Spending still well exceeded that even in district, was it nine or seven? Even in that district alone, we exceeded two hundred and fifty million dollars. So we were able to do more than was originally slated, just based on again, that pressing need for the facilities to remain open and invest holistically and responsibly. But as you see this slide, you see these charts, of course, you can't deny that there's a disparity as we focus primarily on over enrollment. I think the next slide, Cardo should show, did that, did that work? Nope, first, we're gonna look at this in a different way. So you can see here just by district, like the amount of investments we put in. There's no district that didn't get a new school and the repairs under five million aren't something we talk about a lot, but they are major investments. So, you know, there's not a school in the facility unless it's new that didn't have some work done. You can see District Eight had the most repairs under five million, and that's just representative of the facility condition there. Next slide. And this is really the cycle-one results, so again, the focus was on resolving overutilization. At twenty seventeen, that hundred and sixteen percent, you see that fall to where we are today. And then in twenty twenty-eight, we're expecting it to be ninety-eight percent, which is a little short of that sweet spot, but it's almost right there. You even see the south starting to come up to a sweet spot there. And its utilization as well, which should be helpful to resolve some of those things we talked about that are the realities of under enrollment as well. Next slide. So this is cycle two, now this is cycle two exactly as it was presented in twenty seventeen, so it does require change. A couple of things I wanna note, that cycle two is supposed to represent, and it will represent, a turn from over enrollment as our guiding focus to addressing a lot of the historic and present concerns around equity and facility condition. One of its goals is to rescue those TBD schools, can't remember if I mentioned those in detail. But at the time, I talked about those twenty-nine consolidations. Well, capital programs at the time could not recommend consolidation. So what we recommended was a comprehensive boundary study to focus on consolidations and getting those schools, those students into new facilities prior to any consolidation action. Unfortunately, that was frozen at the time by the board and it was frozen for a few years. So we got pretty far into cycle one before we were able to do the things you now see at Colin Powell Academy and Brandywine Academy. So one of the first things we wanna do is we update cycle two, which again was also created without an approved priority order. So we want to develop a priority order, we want to rescue the TBD schools. Because they are sprinkled out between cycle two and cycle three, but the note in the plan was always, once you do these studies about consolidation, that's when you reevaluate where that new school should be built to get those students into modernized facilities as well. Another part, I'm just gonna go ahead and talk about it here, of that new master plan update, besides the prioritization order, is folding in some of our new concerns, we've got blueprint initiatives, we need to look at CTE expansion, we need to look at pre-K expansion. Wanna see if we can exceed some of the sustainability guidelines that were not part of the twenty fourteen study. I don't know, maybe PG CPS is ready for its own sheep-farmed solar array, who knows? Like, but those are the kind of things we wanna look at and we also wanna look at if any of that represents savings that allows us to advance cycle two a little faster, because the need there is great. Okay, the next slide. Oh, this is, you could see, again, this is just as presented, this is not as worked through in a master plan update process. But even as presented back when the cycle one was developed. You can see cycle two was always planned to be a little more even, I mean especially if you consider central and south together. It does exceed the investment in the north, which will still have some capacity concerns. But as we saw, it's not projected to be the crisis point that it is right now. So this would give us an ability to address concerns around equity, if I, Ricardo, I can go around equity and spending. And this is just the timeline for how to do that. November twenty twenty-four, we're launching new ed specs, because although, like I'm telling you, the ed's priority of the ed specs is so important around equity and it's so important to know the pain points of how our facilities outside of condition are serving us. Those ed specs were done in twenty fourteen, so they're missing a lot of these things we're talking about, they're missing some of the newer goals, they're missing sustainability, they're missing blueprint and CTE spaces and pre-K seats. We also didn't analyze back then our regional schools, how are they performing given their specific programs? You know, places like Benjamin Philouy will definitely tell you like, how can we do this without like an auditorium? Just things like that are important, Laura Kennedy recently asked, where are we in the process? And it doesn't feel good to say, oh, you know, you weren't prioritized because you're a regional program. So it's just one of those things we want to pull in. So we're hoping by January twenty-five to launch this update, again focused on cycle two and where we need to accelerate those in cycle three, where condition requires it. It should have a comprehensive component looking at consolidation. And of course, as we talk about those things, those are very important, like community engagement pieces. So when we did this before, it was a lot of community engagement. It was a different time, because it's twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen, so it was a lot of traveling to the different areas. We were in every region, every quarter, holding meetings. But I think we can do better than that now, just with the availability of virtual meetings, I think we can reach more people. And then we can give our preliminary presentation findings to the board, we can work through it. This isn't presenting for the EFMP that will, you'll see in April, but it will present by May twenty twenty-six, that's our goal there. Think that's everything, then you know what else we would define too, though, I just wanna make sure I'm not missing any major notes I made here. Is just some things we need to spend some time defining as a system is what our standards are. And this will come out again in kind of the ed spec process around lockdown and security and anti-vandalism. But all that weighed against the general desire to build like light, airy, happy buildings that you get excited about when you come in, because we want learning environments and we want safe learning environments. But it's an opportunity to really proactively investigate what is working around the world without resorting to building jails, right? I think next slide. We have a glitch. Ah, yeah, I gotta do a quick update on major projects, it's just something we always do, so bear with me. This is William Schmidt Outdoor Education Center. Occupancy is still twenty twenty-six, the construction budget is about fifty-nine million dollars. I just wanna give you a heads up that right now, not all the villages are able to be included, given our current funding constraints. Which we'll talk about as we get into the FY twenty-six CIP numbers. Next slide. You know, there's always Sutland High School, phase one is gonna finish in August twenty twenty-eight. The construction budget is still three hundred and ninety million dollars today. We're still having some extra needs for support as we coordinate with permitting and utility companies. And we're starting to evaluate, can we consolidate to any degree some of the remaining phases? With some level of student relocation that can maybe compress that, the schedule, because again, August twenty twenty-eight is just phase one. We still have to then like knock down the CVPA building, we have to do the fields. And of course, all of it is phased around an occupied Sutland. This little thing on the bottom here is just what you can see from the construction camera, I think that is basically a stairwell. But you know, it's always exciting for construction people when you come out of the ground. Next slide. Oh yeah, I couldn't resist this, it's just a twenty-second time lapse, I think it's a year and a half worth. Don't quote me on that. This is William Ward. Phase one is complete and is occupied, it's, you know, it's phased. So the old William Ward, and I think you can see it down here in the little screenshot down here, that's where the old William Ward is, so it's very close. So there's been a lot of coordination, everybody's, I think, been really working together with all of our different entities to minimize the disruption to education. But it always was going to be phased, it was always gonna be build the new William Ward next to the old William Ward. And until we knock the old William Ward down and finish the site, which will happen over this year by spring, the May twenty twenty-five. You know, it takes a little bit of coordination on these alternate traffic plans and access to the site. But the building itself is absolutely amazing. Next slide. I think I did another time lapse. Eleanor Showa, where it's substantially complete, it's just a beautiful facility. I don't have much to say, it's just exciting, it was exciting to see it on opening day as well. Next slide. Now we are at the adopted FY twenty-five capital budget. Think Ricardo's gonna take over here.
Thank you, our director, Jackson eloquently explained how we got to this point. And the process of the development of our capital budget. She described in detail our drive to provide equity for the safe and rich and educational environment for our students. To our school district. These projects are based on EFMP and the master plan that she mentioned earlier. And it aims to address the unique needs of the various clusters within our county. The north cluster, the central and the, and the south. And an example of that is on the capacity in the northern cluster. And the projects that we have put as a priority in that part of the cluster. I particularly like the slide that shows all of the major projects by over the next five years and the status that they're in. And in a nutshell, we use that, that summary of the projects that are in progress and the ones that are planned for the future to help us develop the capital budget. For those projects that have a construction manager on the contract, we're able to request and work with them to get a payment request, a payment request, a process of the payments that are due for those projects over the next few years. For those ones that are still in the design stage, we're able to rely on the architects to develop, at least for them to share with us a projected cost of what the project will cost at the end of its life. For projects such as windows, HVACs, roof replacements, we're able to get market rates and to create an estimate of what it would cost to replace those items, whether it's HVAC, replacing the HVAC of particular school or a roof replacement based on the square footage of that school. The reason why I mentioned this is to give you confidence of the level of effort and analysis that actually went in to develop some of the numbers I'm about to present, primarily for FY twenty-six. But before we jump into FY twenty-six, I wanted to give a quick overview or review, so to speak, of what we requested in FY twenty-five. And what was actually approved. FY twenty-five was approved by your board last September. Eventually approved by the state around October, November. And this past June was approved by the county and as And this past June was approved by the county and as subsequently is uh approved and in our oracle system for. I guess um spending for our current fiscal year. There were four main projects, um new and replacement school projects for F Y twenty five. Sutland. For the Sutland project, uh we requested seventy three million dollars and ninety seven percent of that was was uh approved. For Cool Springs, we requested thirty eight, but only fifty one percent. Of that on nineteen million dollars was actually approved for funding by the county and our state. For William Smith, that was a hundred percent we uh funded at thirteen million by the county primarily. And only seven percent of the the funds requested for the new northern area high school was um funded at two point eight million dollars. And this is all in F Y twenty five. For uh some of the mandated projects and the county wide category, the county wide um projects. That was requested in F Y twenty five. On the left hand side, it shows the requested funds and on the right hand side shows those funds that were actually approved. All the way to the bottom, you see we requested seventy one million dollars, but only twenty five percent of those eighteen million dollars was actually funded by the. Primarily by the county. The ones that are embold or the ones that were not funded, but. They are critical for the safety and uh the safety and mandated requirements for. Um, some of the many of the buildings within our school system. If we took a look. At how that looks on an overall yearly basis, if we go back for ten years. You'll see that um some of the highest level of fundings occur around twenty twenty. And twenty twenty one, just around just after the COVID COVID age, I guess when funding was readily available um from the federal government. But that dropped significantly in twenty twenty four. In twenty twenty, um the county funded was a hundred and thirty four top million dollars, but in twenty twenty four, it was eighty million. And in twenty twenty five, that also was eighty four million dollars. Even if we added back the nineteen million dollars for the uh the alternative construction financing or the P three. We're still below the levels of to F Y twenty twenty three, twenty two, and definitely of F Y twenty. That's F, that's F Y twenty five. Let's take a look at what F Y twenty six will look like. And F Y twenty six, our preliminary um conversation with O N B, the county. In the case that the target bond level is about a hundred and three million dollars. And this is below the average. I just described the the years of uh funding. And this is about thirty three percent on uh below those average funding for the past five years. Uh, another positive highlight is uh on the, just at the bottom, the roof replacements. Um, are funded, especially the ones that we're requesting in F Y twenty six was significantly higher than what was actually approved in the prior years. Remember the sheet that shows the slide that shows all of the projects? Well, here's a summary of those projects that are either in progress or are slightly planned out for the future. We are requesting for Sutland High School. Thirty two uh thirty two point eight million dollars. Most of that is coming from local uh county funding, thirty million dollars. And a small amount, two point eight million dollars from uh the state. For William Smith, um thirteen million dollars, the same as it would be requested for F Y twenty five, and that's primarily fully funded by the county. For Cool Springs, which is in this design stage. Uh, we're requesting forty two million dollars, thirty seven from the state, primarily from the state. So the Cool Springs is primarily at this time being funded from the state in F Y twenty six. And a small amount, smaller amount, five million dollars from the county. New Northern, uh we are requesting twenty two million dollars. Again, most of that. Requested from the state, twenty million dollars and a small about two million dollars um from um. From the county and High Point High School is in a design stage and we're requesting a smaller amount, uh three hundred and three hundred thousand dollars. There are also a few other projects that are considered for future constru- future construction. I said future construct- construction loosely. Because uh Riverdale and Crossland, we've already received or have in our, I guess coffers. Uh, fifteen, about fifteen million dollars each for those two projects. So we are actually in the process of initiating the the development of those projects. So we're working on those projects and we continue to work on those projects in F Y twenty five. And F Y twenty six, we did not request any additional funds for those two projects because we've already have funding in place for those. Um, I think um. Director um Jackson mentioned the two phase um renovation, Longfield and Calberton. And those are in the design stage and so we did not request any funds this. Sign significant funds this year, but we expect that those funds will come and later in the year. And the same for the new southern area of uh elementary school and Blidenburg High School Correction. Remember the ones, the sheet, the slide that shows all of the bold? Well, I think it is extremely necessary for us to reestablish uh the funding for those projects, primarily the mandated um projects, ADA corrections. The um the buried fuel tanks, code corrections. But all the way down to the bottom, um stadium upgrades uh in F Y twenty five, that was not funded. Um, by the county, uh but we're requesting four point five million dollars to address those needs. I'm not gonna go through all of the numbers because you already have this document, uh but if you have any questions about any of the numbers, we'll happy to address those questions. Here is the timeline um for the upcoming C I P. But before I get to that, I want to give a summary of where we are financially. From a financial perspective, because I've called a hu- a a lot of numbers, um but I'd like to summarize where we are. So if we look at the county, um the funding request from the county perspective. Um, our major projects, the ones that I mentioned earlier, Smith, Sutland, Cool Springs, et cetera. Uh, we're requesting fifty one point six million dollars from the from the county. For those compliance like ADA code corrections and buried fuel tanks, we're requesting three point six million dollars. Uh, again, from the county. Those other projects such as major repairs, another thirty five point eight million dollars. We have to also include the um A C F, the uh P three. Um, projects, that's nineteen million dollars uh for this year, and we're primarily looking at F Y twenty six. And admin cost of four point three million, or this comes to about a hundred and thirteen million dollars. Uh, at one of the earliest slides, we mentioned the preliminary bond target level of a hundred and three million dollars. So there's a uh ten million dollar difference that we are um in the process of negotiating those or we. Intend to negotiate that difference uh with the um county. On the state level, um the primarily funds that we're requesting are in the um major projects area of sixty two million dollars. And there are other um to support other programs. We have several other grants, such as the healthy school grants and the agent school program. Um, that will help support um some of the projects that we've discussed before. I'm going to um send you back to um Director Jackson. She's gonna walk you through the C I P timeline. And moderate any questions that you might have regarding the budget.
Yeah, I just wanted to add two things that were on the previous slide. Um, our now board chair, um Ms. Walker had. Discussed having like by district pullout pages in a meeting, I guess now now a year ago. But I thought it was a great idea. So you have the first draft, which is loading to board docs right now. Um, I hope you will consider them a first attempts we can build upon. But I think it discusses what we've completed. It discusses. Um, what's in progress and already funded and it is a highlight what is in the current C I P in each district as well as. What is in cycle one, whether or not that's necessarily um. Able to be funded in F Y twenty six to thirty one, which is the length of the C I P. Some of them were there kind of slipping to thirty one due to funding constraints. Still thought it felt like it was important to identify. Um, we are working on this need statement appendix. What it will probably look like is. All of the things that we really thought were needed, but we um couldn't. Ask for it without like grossly exceeding affordability and it's not that we think um we shouldn't be articulating. Our need. I I think our fear is being extreme in either way, like. If we just ask right at affordability, I think that communicates that when they fund a hundred percent. That we have everything we need and we clearly don't. On the other hand, that five hundred and seventy million dollar number I told you we asked. If I create a C I P at five hundred and seventy million. Um, it would be very hard to do that in a priority order that would then be honored because it would have so many projects. Um, that we would lose some of our control on where that money uh ultimately goes. And then the C I P process is a little different than operating in that there's no built in reconciliation. So. We don't get a final number from the county until like late October. We don't get a final. Number from the state on how much their total C I P investment is gonna be until around December. So it is very hard to kind of zero in on numbers in in July and August and time for these. Um, presentations, but also as that process goes on. And maybe the board approves, like I'm gonna say, High Point High School as our first priority or the F M P did. I shouldn't use that because that's not true, but if they did, like if I then put five hundred and seventy million dollars in my request. I'm giving um the outside agencies and the other political bodies kind of the opportunity. To do a little more cherry picking among our priorities and I would like to. So. We try to find a hybrid approach between making sure you have what you need to maybe advocate for additional funding so you can see. Where the need actually is, but we also don't want to create a C I P that's four times or a quarter. Of what our funding is actually gonna be, no, four times what our funding is actually gonna be. So we don't want to see that that control over local priorities. So those are just. My thoughts there and then I think we can do the next steps and then ask questions. Oh, it's five, but. Especially now, um the C I P comes first reader Thursday. Second reader is September twenty twenty four. I didn't put the public hearing on there, but I think that's the fifth or the sixth. We have to present a approved um C I P to the state. And October, we usually do the same thing for the county so that they can work through their uh letter of support. With the county executive and the county council. Um, and then we actually don't get a final, final number until May, June twenty twenty five for both state and county adoption. So just one of the things I want you to think about is what type of communication during that process. Um, enhances transparency because I'm gonna tell you, after you vote in September twenty four, if. We meet with the state and they come out with a number and they say, if you adjust this, you can get more funding, we're gonna adjust that. And get more funding. So I just want to find a way to do that a little more transparently. Because we don't like to leave money on the table, given kind of what we've outlined is how constrained funding is. So. I'm sure we can come up with something that everybody is comfortable with there. And I think our next slide is just questions.
Thank you so much um for that detailed report and. The history uh behind sort of how we've arrived at where we are today. I really did appreciate that. Um, and sort of the side by side breakdown over the different cycles. Thank you so much for that presentation. Um, so I have a few questions and some comments. And I know that um board members also have some thoughts that they'd like to share as well. Um, let me just see, okay. So. You know, to begin, I. I wanted to see if you could, I'm gonna just ask all of my questions and then. We can go forward from there. Um. I want to, what I didn't really hear in the presentation and just a little bit at the end here was. Sort of how we're leveraging federal programs specifically um. In tandem with our climate change work. In order to build, to to bring the cost down of new construction and major construction. Um. I'd like to know, like, if we are going after some federal grants, specifically some that are available now. Specifically around school construction. And making them more cost effective. Um. I'm really concerned to hear about. Now, the Sutland High School project and the difficult, the challenges and coordinating with permitting. So if you could speak a little to that and, you know, I would ask that. The board be included in whatever challenges are slowing the project down. Um, in terms of how do we work with the county to navigate some of those challenges and maybe you can speak a bit more about that. And then, um, but I'd like to have more of a broader conversation about is really our quality control. Um, and quality assurance um processes around maintenance. You know, while I I do uh see how the prioritization um has shifted between cycles. And how maintenance is, you know, ch- uh challenge because of the um. The conditions of the schools and the age of the schools. You know, what I'm concerned about is, you know, basically the fact that with the board. Re- has not received for each of the capital projects has been. Really some type of breakdown of cost comparisons to other counties. Delivery schedules compared to other counties. And then like the quality. So we often receive change orders or hear about, you know, challenges with new schools or even existing schools. And we're not able to really make informed decisions because on those three items. We don't really have anything to compare against. Um, and my worry is that. We don't have enough. Information about the quality control and quality assurance processes for. Any of those three buckets and how we're controlling for costs and if. Particularly the maintenance work is getting done. And that's what I'd like to talk about. Um, so those are some of my topics here and then I see um Chair Walker hasn't hit up as well.
Okay, so I'm gonna do, I I wrote them down, so I wouldn't forget. Um, so how we leverage federal programs, that's definitely something we're working on. I think this year is the first year. Now, we got an M E A grant before to establish like a baseline. Uh, utility use, which is so necessary for all of the other grants, like the I R A grants. You really have to have a handle on what your cough savings would be. And so I know that work is in progress. It's no longer a capital programs kind of own thing. So if we have um Jason or Dr. Coleman on the call and Mr. Washington. Um, there is a sustainability director, there is a process around um advancing in that area. And we, on the capital side, though, we do have some things that are still burgeoning studies to see for some of those cycle. One and maybe like more imperative cycle two schools. So I don't know if I got to say this somewhere in there, but. The extension of the timeline due to funding for cycle one does make it necessary to accelerate. Some of those schools, like they're just not gonna make it. They're not gonna be able to house construction. So. They are looking at things they can do to maybe like help us do a roof replacement. If we expand like our solar capacity there, we build a canopy over a um parking lot, like they're. Looking at the schools in the D C type feeder zone because there's like. Five times more money there that can offset some of those costs. So they actually walked all our buildings. Two weeks ago, so I'm just really looking forward to see how that works, but that's the kind of limited piece that's currently under my shop.
Thank you so much. And Director, Director Jackson, I think that's, that's kind of the. That's what the board needs to see, like in terms of, okay. Here are the projects, here are the grants we're going for, and this is how it's gonna reduce, you know, heating costs over time, like that. And and how it coincides with the climate change action plan. Having that thorough line helps us to better understand and better advocate, you know, where we are going to see cost savings. Um, you know, that that's something that I I would really like to see and understand because I know these are just major initiatives.
Yeah, they are.
Well, I I will, I will just jump in right there too is that remember that some of this is also flowing parallel to us with the ad hoc committee. They are still trying to work through exactly how we are implementing the C cap as well. And so some of this information that you're requesting. It we, they're still developing how that is determined through the ad hoc committee that's working with Director Morrison. And with uh uh Vice Chair um Harris and Boozer Struthers. So so there is a. So so that is is definitely top of mind, just in terms of what grants are possible and what that looks like. But I think they're also trying to put together exactly what that framework is of the grants that we're going after so that we are very intentional. So that we are very intentional uh with those grants per se, um that we're just not taking a scattershot approach uh to that. Um and so I would say that that is definitely uh a top of mind, but that's why nothing has been like, you know. Pulled into the C I P yet because we are looking for guidance to make sure that we are all rowing in the same direction. Uh at how we are looking at at those type of grants and how uh the other big piece of grants is the time uh alignment. Is that, you know, if it's a federal grant, you know, what is the timing associated with that grant? And does it coincide with our delivery of these schools? And what is the deliverable for those grants? Is it just construction progress or is it delivered school? And will we be able to meet it in that window of time necessary to uh get the grant? So there are some pieces here that uh we understand that um we want to uh be competitive and wanna get as much as possible. But at the same time, we understand also the capacity issues that exist. And what exactly are the priority areas for the district as it relates to C cap? And new construction in those facilities as we go forward. So I I I I wanna say that that is definitely underway, but that's, that's why there is no. You know, we are uh expecting this amount of cost savings, these type of things, et cetera. Just because we are in the infancy of of putting these in place. Um and uh one of the big things of that is taking, you know, our energy utility bills. That's what's being requested now. What are we paying for in the schools that we're replacing right now? So that that we can start to uh gauge what those savings would be uh in new construction. And so, so I'll put that out there to just say that that is definitely uh top of mind. Um I can't speak for the ad hoc committee, I don't know exactly where they are with all of this, but I do know that that is stuff that they are working through with Director Morrison now.
Okay, so I I have a burning desire to answer the other two questions. Okay. So the cost comparison thing, like we would love to provide that. And I think as you see comparing us to other L E As, especially if you compare us to the ones adjacent to D C, you start to see. That we're in line, definitely if you wanna go out to the eastern shore or like the very southern portion of Charles County. We can't compete, just like uh housing prices near D C are just much higher than they are in the rural environments. You will see the same thing happening um with our schools. But I also think it would be interesting, so when I show you that, I also want you to know that. Um and and it'll be apparent here that P G C P S has always historically um. Use its capital budget a little differently than some of those to offset operating. And and the intention of that has always been to spare the classroom, right, which I I can support in the intentions. But I'm saying it is hard from a capital person to see your numbers compared as if they are the same. When we have an admin class on top of that, cuz our salaries are there and they're not in operating. Or when other agencies will build a school and it'll be like a four percent F F and eight. Cuz they're just gonna do student desks and student chairs and operating is gonna cover everything else from beakers to balls to dance leotards. That's not what's happening right now in our new school, so that is another attribute attributing factor to where our final numbers come out. And if it spares the operating budget, I think it has some like uh logical consistency. Like none of us would say we don't care about um what's available for the classroom. But it's not comparing apples to apples, even if that's the permanent decision for how we do. So when you see this cost comparison, I'm gonna break those out. So you can see, yeah, we don't just buy beakers, we bought leotards. Um for Eleanor Show when it opened for the dance classes. That is not, that is not normal, that is not standard, but the school needed it to operate, so we did it. So that that will be part of that. I think our delivery schedules might be a little outside of norms like. So and I'll be happy to show that, especially though it'll break down by timeline and you'll see things to come back to your Sutland comment. Like the permitting challenges, things are a little different here, our stormwater requirements are a little different here. So Sutland did have like an eighteen month delay around permitting. Right now, you know, that's been really elevated. I think County Council got very involved and that has been very helpful. There are some other um entities that have gotten involved and I would be happy to fold the board in to those ongoing conversations, not just for Sutland. But for all of the projects that are coming up, because that would be very helpful for us as well.
In Director Jackson, if I can just say, we know that permitting can be fast tracked. The P three, right? We have seen agencies come together to fast track permitting. In order to build schools in two years and we understand that we have very high storm water um thresholds here, right? And so that's kind of where we as board members need to understand where does our advocacy take place? Because an eighteen month delay is. You know, I feel that that is something that the board needs to be a lot more active in trying to resolve. And you know, something you mentioned about, you know, I I definitely wanna explore more in terms of why. Our capital budget is paying for operating costs, um because, you know, every dollar that's in the capital budget. I my, in my opinion, needs to be going towards capital projects. And so, you know, even though that's something that we may have done historically, you know, I just don't know if that is best practice. Um given some of the conditions that we are seeing. I don't wanna monopolize the time. My third question, we can come back. I wanna go um to Chair Walker at this time and then um uh Board Member Jonggo, thank you.
Thank you so much. Did you want me to yield um for your committee or is this okay? Okay, so thank you. Um I just had a couple things. First, I wanted to say thank you guys so much for this presentation. Um it really exceeded my expectations. I know I've been asking for a while, so thank you for acknowledging that about my district. But it's really helpful to be able to see and you all did a great job at kind of bucketing each of the um different areas, so thank you so much for that. The couple of pieces that I had around Camp Schmidt, which of course is in District Nine. But I happen to know that although we are getting a hundred percent of the requested funding, so I'm so appreciative for that. Whether it's the interest rates or things got higher from builders, et cetera, what we recognize is that we're not able to do that project holistically. I don't want you to answer it here tonight. Maybe you can get back to me on it, okay? Um but you, um I just wanted to know what needs to be true to try to secure additional funding, which we might not be able to get. But then the real question is, then how can we confirm priority for the completion of it as we move forward in our next cycle? So we wanna finish it, we know we can't right now because of the funds, even though it's a hundred percent, we know that the cost is extremely higher. So we can't finish it all, but if we can then, if you can tell me offline from here, what is the plan to finish that in one year? And then like what year? That would be great, only cuz I have a lot of questions and I know some of us have a five thirty meeting. Um the sec- the second piece that I have is um, I love this, how do we stack up? Um slide, that was very good. Consider, maybe you can consider adding two columns, which is the change, the percentage change. Because what we can clearly see is that we ask for a huge bucket of money in order to support the programs that we already know. But the county is not always able to fund that a hundred percent. So I think just by way of glance, it might be great to be able to say, hey, based on what we asked and what we have, there is a, okay, you got it, I saw the thumbs up. Thank you. Then I have here.
Two columns, so I only got one column.
Oh, yeah, but that one you had, um there were two sections on the chart, so the percentage of both of them. I forget what they were called, so it's just the first on both sides. The other one I have is I love the cycle now chart, so you had like a cycle one and a cycle two, those were very good. Can we, what do I have right here? I can't even read my own handwriting, I'm sorry. Um. There's something on there, I'll go back and if I can reserve just sending a quick note on what that was for those cycles. Um the timelines for those, something was a little, um I just had a question on one. And if we can tell the public. How funding is determined, and I think that is going back to what Chair um Adam Stafford said around. We're not revenue generating, but we can grab grants wherever possible. And how can we, what can we see by way of additional funds that we can help, if even if the board can help to try to secure those? The last piece I had is I think it's gonna be very important to be able to, as you talk this. I recognize what the strategy is, particularly in the south because of underutilization and et cetera of what we have here for population. What's gonna be important is us to be able to take a look at the maintenance plans and understanding how are those funds? How do we determine how those funds are identified and used inside of schools? Because we're not um necessarily getting a lot of new schools, but we know that we have older buildings per your graph that you showed. How are we prioritizing? How do you all make decisions on how we divvy up the maintenance? Does that make sense?
It does. I just want, when I, you say maintenance, you do mean like the maintenance repairs we are doing with the capital budget versus?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes, for sure. Um also in some of, and because there is a list, a long laundry list. And then as part of that, for instance, one of the examples I can give you, um and again, this can be all offline, we can definitely not talk it tonight. But for instance, when we think fields, I'm just gonna use football fields and lights, for instance, because those are always coming up in everybody's district. And so with that is maybe there's assessments that happen at the fields. Um maybe how do you rank those in order? How do decisions get made? And then how are they then prioritized will be really helpful for people to understand um for our dollars, especially if because of other options, we might not be getting schools. All right, thank you. Did you get all of those?
I did.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Board Member Jonggo and then Vice Chair Harris.
Okay, hi, um, you know, I'm, I wanna keep it short, I know we're already at time a little bit, but um. I just really wanna make sure, and this doesn't, this also doesn't have to be something you answer today, but I definitely would like to catch up with you, Mr. Washington or anybody. Um mainly, I just wanna know that, I just wanna make sure that our schools, um you know, facilities are, you know. That are already built. Um I mean, I know it's great that we're, you know, building our new schools, improving them. And you know, hopefully successfully creating, you know, our blueprints schools in Maryland. Um but I wanna make sure that also that our schools that are, you know, um. That are in need of maintenance are getting done. And the problem that I've at least um encountered a lot as to, or just recently is um a lot of students. Students just um reaching out to me mainly because of the fact that like their field is um supposed to be renovated, never got. There uh, there's some fields that aren't usable, um like Duval's or um. It while I could, I always do that for this example. I actually did get an email from four Duval kids today, just today. Um it urged you need of their, their field. And I really wanna give them a status update because of the fact that they weren't able to join today because in fact, um, like this conflicted. But um I really wanna get a response to them about um what the um, what the capital budget is really working on with their field. And I also just really wanna make sure that like how, how is the structure for our students? Um for the students, for the schools being, you know, being kept up to date, like is there a five yearly period where we come to schools? And we're um making sure that everything's in check, we're making sure that facilities are in need in, you know, desperate, desperate repair. I mean, of course, it's all urgent repairs, but are we keeping, you know, in check of, oh, if there, if there is fields that need to be um done? Or if there's classrooms that need to be renovated? Because um one thing I've heard, like I really have heard a lot is about over in classrooms or um, just like fields. Then, you know, sanitary um needs, it's just a matter of, I wanna make sure that our new schools are having, are having those things in place. So that we don't have to worry about a design floor, it's not an issue, but also that, you know, our schools that we already have, keep them up to date. So that they're still able to be used thirty years. That's it.
No, I I I appreciate that and and so we can de- definitely follow up, but just in general. Uh there is a master list of of uh fields that are are uh generated. Uh one of the big tensions that exists right now is uh the the move and the request. For pretty much all schools in that queue to use turf fields. Uh but we have a C cap now that does not uh uh allow us to use turf fields. So we have some tension that we need to work through at the moment. And so, so those are, so just to give you an example of some of the things that we are are looking at. Um as it relates specifically to uh to to Deval, because of where they were in the uh in the list. Of of renovations, uh the plan this previous summer was just to go in and to uh regrade. And to ensure that it was a playable surface. Um and uh they um uh the the contractor uh messed up, um period. And they uh we had the same work going on at another school and that contractor uh successfully completed it in time. Uh so this was not uh a a a failure of wanting to engage and get this work done. This was um a contractor error that we are remedying now. Um and our plan to remedy that is to really uh eh eh to really um accelerate. And put more into the field than we did before, before it was uh putting in field and grass. And I think now we're just laying down sod as a precursor before we move to the renovation of the full stadium. Uh that was already uh supposed to start in phases. Uh the field was phase one, they are replacing the bleachers, I believe. Uh Director Jackson, starting this spring. Uh and so uh so so there is a plan in place for schedules and there are schedules. Um as it relates to the maintenance plan, and one of the big things that uh Director Jackson talked about at the very beginning of that eight point six billion dollars. That was triggered with deferred maintenance. So so it's not, ooh, this is what we need to build schools, it was deferred maintenance. Meaning that this is what it took to get the schools back to operating order, not to exceptional. But to operating uh utilizing twenty seventeen dollars. And so we can assume that that number is higher now. Uh with that said, um there are annual assessments by the state that comes in and looks at the um um the F C I scores of our school. Uh gives us grades on those, uh requires us to put in place uh maintenance plans. Uh that uh the building services team does. Additionally, what we also uh focus on as well is uh making sure that um there's a new work order system. That's been put in place that allows for us to track um more quickly uh when we have last touched uh a system and an issue within a school. Um as we go forward to do a better job of tracking uh the maintenance. And so, so those are some of the things, but it's a larger conversation and one that we will continue and we can have. And we can set up a meeting to talk to and bring in building services uh to lay that out. Um but but that generally is is the scope of of this issue. And uh we are well aware of the impact that the failure of that work this summer has had on Deval. And that's something that we're taking seriously and are looking to remedy as quickly as possible.
Thank you so much.
Hey, go ahead, Dr. Harris.
Thanks, Chad. I'm staffer, just to close the loop here on C cap. And we realize the the intricacies of running that in tandem with all the updates that we currently have running. Um one of the comments I wanted to make was around grants and a lot of the opportunities with grants is really just timing. Uh of these grants and the and the on staff power we have to help with getting these grants. And we've, we partnered all the way up to, you know, members of, members of Congress who are helping us um get things in order in timely fashion. But um I I I I'll say this, certain grants are gonna be more helpful to the areas of cost savings in terms of bigger buckets. For example, we got a grant that applies specifically to electric buses, we got a smaller grant that applies directly to lighting. Now, the the more media grants are things like, you know, solar panels and things of that nature um that we're all constantly seeking. But what I, and I'll kinda speak for Board Member Booze and Struthers here since she's not here. Um we have a comprehensive list of uh items that we plan to tackle through each of our C cap meetings throughout the year. Um I'm happy to work with this committee here to shuffle things around to make sure we're prioritizing those cost saving items potentially first and having. Um more open and broader conversations around there, so let's you and I tag up offline and we'll um, we'll see how we can get some synergy around that.
Yes, I wanted to share two grants happening right now that I think that perhaps we just need to have an ad hoc meeting about. To see what can we do? One, it's called the Infrastructure Reduction Act. Direct pay tax credits and the Maryland Clean Energy Center state grants. So I I think that this might call for like a a smart, a a committee of this team. And the C cap group to come together to see how can we, how can we fast track? You know, um what what I'd like to say is, you know, I think I, well, I'm grateful for the the breakdown here. And and I thank you for that update on Duval. I too have received a lot of emails and videos from that community. And I think it just speaks to kind of that broader quite issue of quality control and quality assurance, you know. Just on this specific topic, you know, when the contractor comes to like deliver the sod, you know, do we have?
You know, I, just on this specific topic, you know, when the contractor comes to like deliver the sod, you know, do we have, you know, a point person there to receive them and then to check off that it was done and what was the quality? You know, and that's kind of been what I have expressed to, uh, Mr. Stefanelly over and over again that like, you know, the, what I'm seeing is that you all are allocating the funding for maintenance and you're like saying, this is what needs to be done. But then when I'm asking, you know, him and his team, like, okay, so what are like the quality control protocols you have in place to make sure that this work is getting done to the level that like you have been directed to do? It's like we're, I, I am feel like there's a disconnect. It's, and so, you know, I'm going to actually make a motion here. I'm going to move that, uh, I'm going to make a motion that the maintenance department, um, you know, provide the board with some type of, you know, audit of really their, their maintenance uh, program in terms of, uh, cost, delivery and quality. And, um, you know, doesn't have to be done immediate, like at this very mo- like by next meeting. But, you know, we need to develop some type of plan to see kind of how, uh, this is being implemented. Because it, you know, this is probably one of the biggest complaints that board members, uh, receive from schools is around, you know, the actual work that we know is in the plan. We're reading that it's in the plan. We're seeing it. We're talking to you about it. But then on the backend, it's not getting completed. So that was my motion. I don't know if, um, one of the board staff was able to capture that.
I did.
Okay.
Can you read it back, please, the motion?
The motion is, is that the maintenance department provide the board with an audit of the, of their maintenance program to include cost, delivery and quality.
Um, so if I, I can provide more if necessary. Thank you.
Are we open for discussion?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so out of curiosity, when you, wh- what's the, um, I guess, what's the tangible deliverable? Because when I think audit, I think like an external organization's going to look at the maintenance department. So are we just looking for more constant status updates? What, kind of talk me through what the deliverable is?
Well, the deliverable would be kind of like, I'd like to know, like, out of all of our maintenance requests or work orders that are submitted, you know, what is the percentage of them that are completed? You know, within a, a timely fashion, to what extent do they have to be redone? Um, you know, is a, a quality control checklist in place, you know?
I, I, well, a couple of things-
Things that we're not getting information on. And that's, these are the biggest complaints that we're receiving from the community.
But, but that, there's a bifurcation here that, that needs to be expressed. One of them is what, what work orders. That is in the purview of the shops of building services. They can pull that pretty quick is how many work orders we receive, how quickly they're able to close them. That's, that's one part. The next part is, uh, like just contractor services. Most of building services contractor services are emergency repairs, are chillers going down, roofs that need to be replaced. Things that are not, they're not able to sit and plan out fifteen months in advance, a project. Many times, I would say venture to say probably eighty-five percent of the work that building services puts out is an emergency situation. Is a chiller goes down, they need to get one, et cetera. So there is, there are some things. So for instance, with the Duval situation, they basically was feel that they dropped on the field. So I don't know how they would have been able to catch like that they put in on poor, poor field when it was the exact same requirement that they had given to another contractor. Um, and it was, and so, so there are-
Mr. Washington, sorry, this, this actually was Miss Dr. Harris's time to speak. And I don't know that I had, you know, recognized for just a, a comment back at this time. Like, Dr. Harris, were you, were you finished with your question or what, who was your question directed towards?
Um, so I, 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 I think my question has, has been answered. Um, to, to me, it sounds almost like, you know, you know that report we get at the end of the year, Chair Adam Stafford? In terms of the wrap up and what's been done, or even the prep for the summer. I'm thinking it's something like that, that you want almost like a pie chart of saying this is how many things you got in. This the percentage that we have filled and this is the timeline for how we expect to do that. But this is throughout the year and more, um, more frequent.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. And I mean, in regards to this, this particular issue, like for example, e- even if the, the requirement was for a contractor to deliver soil somewhere, I, you know, if you're putting out a, a bad signal or urgent call for someone to do something, I want to know, are, are our staff on hand to check the quality of that a hundred percent of the time, or what needs to be done so that situations like this? This is not, uh, this is not a standalone situation, but what I'm saying is how, how do we, oh, at a systemic level check for the, the work that is being commissioned by maintenance? That, that's what I'm asking for. Um, Dr. Coleman?
Sure. And thank you so much for recognizing me and forgive me that I'm off camera because I've had to get kind of, uh, on a travel, uh, move. Um, just with respect to the Duval piece, uh, to your question, uh, there actually was contra- uh, support, uh, uh, from the maintenance team at the site when the first field dirt was, uh, dropped at the school. Uh, unfortunately, or when the, that initial dirt that was screened, inspected, that it was, it was fine, uh, uh, ran out, the decision was made that additional field dirt had to be provided. And that is when, because this particular maintenance staff member supports multiple projects, the assumption was that the additional field dirt would come from the same location. And unfortunately, it doesn't appear, uh, that that is what occurred. So, uh, I certainly hear the request to talk about our processes for, uh, ensuring contractor uh, work is quality, uh, and we will work to provide that, that response. Uh, but I did just want to clarify that for that Duval piece, uh, we did have staff on site prior to any of the field dirt being dropped. Uh, and it was inspected prior to it being placed on the field.
Yeah, I mean, and, and I'm not, eh, yeah, I appre- I appreciate that. And, and I just, we're using Duval as an example, but this has also been an issue with like tiles and ceilings, like, eh, it could be an example. Someone was commissioned to do something, that the work order has been closed, that they've done it. And then we'll go to the school or we'll get, you know, complete or, or a principal will reach out to us. And, and it's like, it was ne- it never happened. And so I know on my end, when I'm in these meetings, I'm seeing on paper and I'm hearing from the team kind of how you all are approaching this work, which is very intentional. You're very systematic and you are the top of what you do, right? What we're saying is there, we're trying to understand where is the disconnect, where is the? Because there, there is, there is one, and that's kind of what we're asking for in some type of, um, audit or, you know, mem- something that can help us to better support this work being done. What needs to happen to close that loop?
If I can ask a follow-up question to Mr. Washington or Dr. Coleman, Chair Adam Stafford?
I'm sure that's fine.
Um, what do you all typically use as your metric for, I guess, closeouts? For, uh, for projects that you have or workloads that you have? What, what, what do you do to say, okay, this is done and we're moving on to the next thing? I assume it's some form of documentation because documentation equals payment.
It, it's, it's either documentation and sometimes it's, uh, it, it's photos. It's depending on what the closeout is for. Because there's usually some type of verification photographs or, uh, information, because it's usually a work order within a school per se. So, um, to, take for instance, um, we, we're dealing with a lot of, um, uh, painting requests or, or things to, to get schools ready to go, or, um, it just depends on what those, um, work orders are. But usually, uh, it is, it's an automated system. So to close it out, there has to be, um, some, uh, either documentation or, or pictures. And I, I think that they are trying to, to normalize around, uh, what that is as they bring in a new work order system. But that, that is usually how it is done. Uh, and then the, the quality control is, is what, uh, Board Member Adam Stafford, you said, is that the school-based personnel go back. Like when they're told that the work has been completed, they're going back to see that it has been completed, et cetera. Um, and, uh, they are requesting, uh, confirmation either in, uh, documentation or, um, or pictures or something to, to document that is done, um, and who, uh, is signing off on that has been done.
So maybe Chad and Stafford, what we're, what we're asking for instead of a, kind of a, a blitz audit or something of that nature is, um, and we, you, we can work out the language of this, but almost like a monthly closeout document that shows you this. Column A is what you said you're going to do. Column B is what you closed. I don't know if I missed, missed the mark or what you're looking for there.
I mean, I, I would just like to see a comprehensive document for, to where we are now so that we can see what is the root cause of challenges. Or like maybe, like on projects that pertain to like, you know, you know, H V A C, we're finding that the project closeout is, you know, streamlined. Like, you know, we were generally seeing that those projects are closed out and resolved within, you know, thirty days or what have you. And then projects that have to do with like the school exterior or landscaping or, you know, work orders that have to do that are, are typically not. And then we can say, okay, more funding or more attention or whatever needs to happen in this particular area. So it's like, eh, eh, you know, monthly for us, I mean, I just don't know how useful that will be for us. I mean, I think we need a systemic view over like, I don't know, maybe the past six months or something so that we can say, well, it seems like this is probably the root cause of a lot of these, um, you know, persisting issues because we're not doing X. But I just feel like there's, there's just a, a gap here for us around maintenance. And I just generally feel like this is where we're possibly losing money that could be going towards, you know, fulfilling the work that needs to be done. I mean, if, if that was the end of your question, I'm going to go to, um, Dr. Coleman and then back to, um, Mr. Washington.
No, that's fine. I, I definitely appreciate that. Um, I, I just want to make, we'll, we'll go back and we'll review and discuss uh, uh, a little more closely, like the deliverable that's being asked. I'm, I'm hearing, uh, uh, the, the discussion. Uh, part of the complaint that I know our community feels is this is what happens when you have billions of dollars within deferred maintenance, that when there is this significant gap between what we have as far as resources to address uh, the many concerns that we've documented in our buildings versus the resources that are available. Uh, but certainly we look forward to, uh, presenting on, uh, kind of our maintenance plan, our, looking at our work order system, discussing how we work with contractors, uh, uh, you know, we look forward to that discussion.
Thank you.
No, it was just, it was just to reemphasize that. I, I think hearing the conversation, I, I, I'm kind of formulating, uh, thinking about like the types of program, types of projects, the types of, of work orders like that. Like we just have to go back, but, but there, there's a framework here. We just have to figure out what makes sense. Uh, because there are probably some work orders that, or some types of projects that, uh, we, we don't need to discuss here. But there, there are other ones that are. And so it's just, uh, taking that, uh, and, and talking with the team as Dr. Coleman just said.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I think at this time, um, Dr. Harris, if your hand is not up, we can, um, move towards the vote. And then I think we're just about at time.
Um, my only comment was to make a friendly and limited motion to allow their team to develop a framework for what the deliverable will look like. Because it seems like they're going back and forth around what it would look like. And I think, I think, eh, 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 I think we're all open to do it. I think we just need to know what, what it looks like.
Sure. And I don't mind collaborating with them with, in terms of what, what the ask is. And I think just the three buckets, um, cost, delivery and quality. And then we can drill down into sort of kind of what, uh, Mr. Washington and Dr. Coleman just mentioned. Absolutely. I don't mind collaborating on that at, at all.
All right.
Okay, we can move forward. Uh, uh, Ms. Adley, please call the role.
This is Adam Stafford.
Hi.
Dr. Harris?
Hi.
Mr. Jongo?
Hi.
Through in the affirmative, the motion passes.
Okay, thank you so much. So again, I want to thank everybody for being in attendance at this meeting. I know we've gone over, um, the follow-ups from the meetings will be posted to the board docs upon the receipt. The next virtual meeting of the Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee will be on September eighteenth. Please continue to check the PGCPS website, and specifically the OBFA page, um, for more information and updates. Um, I want to thank everyone for all of the great discussion, great discussions. And the August twenty seventh, twenty twenty-four, um, OBFA meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all so much.
We'll go on.